Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Fairfield Public Schools Board of Education to order for February 13th, 2018. Present is Ms. Pittko, Ms. Lieber, Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Gerber, myself Philip Dwyer, Mrs. Jacobson, Mr. Acer is out of town, so he won't be with us tonight, has an excused absence. Mrs. Maxon Canelli and Mr. Peterson, and of course our student representatives as well, but those are the official board members. Could I ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I was at Ludlow watching the girls' basketball Ludlow team play Staples, and they led the whole way, and in the last two minutes they were at five points up and then suddenly one point down, and it came to a buzzer beater where they had a valiant midcourt shot but did not go in, so they lost by one point. But it was a very exciting game, so why don't we hear from our students from Ludlow to see what else is exciting happening?
So I have some more sports updates for you. The cheerleaders placed second in the FCX this weekend. The girls' ski team finished their season undefeated with a record of 22 to 0, which earns them a place in the championship. The gymnastics team placed third at FCX over the weekend. The girls' indoor track placed third over the weekend at States. And coming up on February 23rd, there's acapella night at Tomlinson, which our acapella singers are getting ready to perform at. On January 23rd, it was Ludlow's eighth grade night, so all of the eighth graders from Roger Ludlow Middle School came over and... All the eighth graders from Roger Ludlow Middle School came over and got a tour of the, all the elective options and had an information session so they can kind of make educated course selection decisions. And for all of the Ludlow students, course selection just finished up, so a lot of the teachers were busy trying to... No, I'm sorry. Trying to explain and like guide students to make proper choices for the following years. And as a member of the senior class, a lot of people in the social studies department would go to junior classes and kind of explain the different options and introduce them to the different courses they could take. Other Ludlow?
Any questions for our representatives from Fairfield Ludlow High School? Thank you. Ward, what's new?
All right, so my counterpart unfortunately has a commitment with the ski team tonight, so I will be holding down the fort. Without further ado, last week at Ward, we had our first winter sports pep rally in which all of our teams came together in front of the whole school, spoke about the past season. We also had an assembly for the seniors for distracted driving where there were... where there were simulators from the Connecticut Department of Transportation that demonstrated the immense danger of distracted driving. Ward also hosted a tour of the electives night to introduce incoming ninth graders of our many electives. Over 600 students and their families attended the electives night, and 100 Ward students served as tour guides. This morning, we had a breakfast at our restaurant here at Ward, Barlow's, for students who were nominated as MVPs, which stands for Mustang Values Personified. Mustang being what we call ourselves here at Ward, and Values Personified being our Ward acronym, which you may be familiar with if you've ever heard any of our wonderful headmaster, Mr. Ebling's speeches as welcoming, academic, respectful, dynamic, and ethical. And I have to say, when my counterpart Ted Orban and I attended, the food the students had prepared was phenomenal. The future business leaders of America Club is running a toy drive for the Yale New Haven Children's Hospital. And on to sports, Sean Conway, a Mustang basketball player, I believe last night scored his 1,000th point as a dunk, which I have to say is pretty cool entertainment. Alex Steele won the most outstanding wrestler award. Our Ward dance team went to Florida for Nationals and won 10th in the nation, so we are very proud of them. And our girls' ski team finished their regular season undefeated this year. That about wraps it up for what's been happening at Ward.
Okay, questions for Ward? Mrs. Maxon Canelli?
And I thought I knew this, but just to make sure, it's a Ward-Ludlow ski team, correct? Isn't that a co-op team?
Yes, we do have a...
I just want to make sure you're referring to the same team, that's all. A second question is that isn't there an exciting athletic event going on tomorrow?
Yes, it's the Ward-Ludlow basketball game, where we're all excited to dress in costumes for a very fun night.
And that's being held where?
At Ward. The boys' game's at 7:15, the girls' game's at 5:30, doubleheader.
Good luck.
And not to take anything off the competitive edge, but I believe it's also serving as a fundraiser, isn't it?
I believe so. I can't get to you all the information about that though right now.
Isn't the coaches' challenge for Coaches Against Cancer or something like that?
I would not be the person to ask for that.
Okay, all right, sorry, all right, I thought so. So, you know, definitely...
The answer is yes.
Definitely encourage people to go and attend, not only for the spirit, but great fundraising event, and it's a tremendous night to go see some basketball.
Any other questions for our representative from Ward? If not, as always, you're welcome to stick around, or you're welcome to move on to other things as your schedule requires. We have a busy agenda tonight with several action items, especially the ed specs for two different projects, as well as a discussion on different facility planning considerations. So I'm hoping that we can move through the items fairly quickly so that we don't end up at quarter of 11, suddenly getting to discussion of facility planning and not do it justice. So for those of you who have questions and/or comments, if we could be as concise as possible, that will help us get through the whole agenda. So having said that, we are starting with a presentation from Malone and McBroom to talk about their enrollment projections in the Mill Hill deficiency report. Mr. Pat Gallagher, does the superintendent want to make any opening comments while he comes forward?
Yes, because we don't have Malone and McBroom very often, and he is here tonight, because the October presentation was not in front of the Board of Education, it was with the ad hoc committee that no longer exists. So we have asked Malone and McBroom to condense very much so the two previous presentations, but since we have so many new board members, we thought it was good information, so it'll be a little bit more than just the 10-year projections because he is here tonight and can answer questions for you.
And are we getting something on the board behind us? Correct?
Yeah.
So we should move off for those of us who are on the flight. Oh, and I should make one announcement for the board. There's a lot of stuff here, so if you'll allow him to go through the presentation, just make notes as to questions, and then once the presentation is finished, we can get to the Q and A.
Sorry, I'm trying to blow this up real quick, so I'm trying to figure this out here. There we go. All right, thanks for having me tonight. My name's Pat Gallagher, I'm with Malone and McBroom. We're a planning and engineering firm based at a Cheshire, Connecticut, and we've been working with the district for the last few years conducting enrollment projections as well as assisting with long-range facilities planning. So tonight, I'm going to cover three topics. I'll kick off by talking about facilities and capacities for schools. Next, I'll talk about enrollment trends and the update to the enrollment projections that we conducted in the fall. And finally, I'll talk about the scenario planning that we've conducted over the years, including previous scenarios that we looked at two years ago. So I'll start by talking about facilities and capacities. And this year, we had really a new lens with which to look at facility capacity, and that is because we have an ed spec from Holland Hill School that we use to determine, you know, what's the ideal use of space? What's the, what are the necessary support functions for all elementary schools within Fairfield? And this is outlined in the Holland Hill ed spec, really showing what are the support services, what are the educational spaces, and what are the special education spaces that every school in Fairfield should have and strive to have in their building. One of the things that we looked at was which of these spaces need to occupy full-size classrooms, and which of these spaces need to occupy smaller spaces. And we were able to, in addition to your standard instructional spaces, determine that art, music, math, science, and perhaps a computer lab, if not integrated with a media center, would need full-size spaces. And then a range of small spaces are needed in order to support your educational specification. Some schools have dedicated small spaces for all of these uses, however, because your facilities are of various vintages, some schools need to get creative in how they program these small spaces and may need to subdivide full-size classrooms. So as I mentioned, you have buildings that were built in many decades, and they're all state-of-the-art at the time they were built. And as facilities age, they really need to get creative in how they program the building in order to meet modern educational needs. And so it makes it difficult to do an apples-to-apples comparison of facilities. But when we did go through, we looked at whether facilities had adequate small spaces or whether they could have the necessary support functions in full-size classrooms. We also did not count portable classrooms toward a facility's capacity because there's a desire for the district to move all portable classrooms. So we started by doing an inventory of your current spaces. To give a framework for your current school buildings, you'll notice that with the exception of Roger Sherman, each school has either 18 or 24 full-size instructional classrooms, and that translates to a three-section per-grade school at 18 classrooms and a four-section per-grade school at 24 classrooms. Schools have various numbers of small spaces, some having 17 and more, and some having 10. Other full-size classrooms include art and music, and again, there's some variation between the different buildings depending on the age. And then we also have district-wide programs such as pre-kindergarten and CLC that require full-size instructional classrooms in some of your schools. And again, portable classrooms were not included in the capacity. So I'll go into a little more detail by going over three examples of how different schools achieve the ed spec. And Burr is one of your newer schools, built in 2004, and small spaces, the support functions of the building are highlighted in yellow, and in your newer schools, these small spaces are incorporated into the design of the building, and so there's adequate space for all of the necessary support functions, and aligns very well with your current elementary ed spec. As I mentioned before, older schools need to be more creative because they have fewer small spaces, and as a result, they need to rely on full-size classrooms and subdivide these spaces in order to meet your ed spec. The last example being Mill Hill, and Mill Hill stands out as really the only school that needs portable classrooms in order to align with the elementary ed spec. The old Holland Hill would fall in this group as well. And really, it's a combination of having fewer small spaces than a new school, as well as fewer large classrooms, and so there's really not that extra space to subdivide. So we ended up categorizing each of your elementary schools into one of three categories. Most of your schools have adequate small spaces to meet the ed spec. However, Dwight Jennings and Osborne Hill do need to be creative in how they use that space in order to align with that elementary ed spec. And then Mill Hill really standing out as the only school where there are severe deficiencies where portable classrooms are needed in order for you to meet those goals and objectives. So looking at the lens of the Mill Hill construction project, as I mentioned, the portable classrooms are really the only way that Mill Hill is functioning as a three-section per-grade school. If those portables were to be removed, those five spaces would need to be relocated to the brick-and-mortar building and would displace instructional rooms. Now, because we were looking at capacity through the lens of the ed spec, all of the support functions and programs take priority over classroom space because we want to make sure that all kids in Fairfield Public Schools have access to all of the enrichment spaces, art, music, as well as special ed and resources. And really, the need to replace, the portable space needs to be replaced with permanent space if the school were to function as a full three-section per-grade school. So we did use a different methodology this year compared to previously. As I alluded to before, we were really educationally driven this year. We were looking at desired deployment of space in order to meet educational objectives and really taking that education-first approach, making sure that every school has the same level of electives and enrichment, et cetera. We also accounted for district-wide programs such as CLC and pre-K that also take up some of the full-size classrooms in your school. Previously, we were really looking at physical space within your building, and as a result, some of the capacity numbers did not let you align with the ed spec. So things such as having art on a cart or having OTPT in an auditorium might be some of the consequences of a capacity number not aligning with the ed spec. We also did not take into account district-wide programs. So the capacity number that we used for this school year is what we're calling operational capacity, and in addition to not counting portable classrooms towards the overall capacity, we deducted out CLC classrooms and pre-K classrooms as well. These programs are not tied to a specific facility per se, however, they are placed in facilities that they are suited to. And so a CLC classroom reduces the capacity by removing what would have otherwise been used for grade-level instruction and loading that at a lower level, which reflects your smaller class sizes for the CLC program. This ends up reducing your overall capacity by about 128 seats, accounting for all of the CLC and pre-K spaces in the elementary schools. Just to do a quick refresher on middle school and high school capacities, these are the same as has been presented in the past, and these, I believe, are based on an architectural study that was done several years ago. Your middle school capacity sitting at just over 2,400, and your high school capacity at 3,000. So now I'm going to pivot to enrollment projections, and I'll start off by talking about your enrollment this school year. So the State Department of Education requires that districts report their October 1st enrollment numbers, and it's our standard practice to use October 1st enrollments for our enrollment projections. We do have our operational capacity, which I discussed previously, that reflects the removal of all the portable classrooms, as well as accounting for district-wide programs. And your percent utilization divides your total enrollment by your operational capacity. At a district-wide level, you're operating at about just over 85% capacity, and that's a very comfortable number. We generally strive for between 80 and 90% utilization. That's really the ideal in that you're using the space, you're using your available space efficiently while still meeting your desired programming needs. And this is especially true for neighborhood-based school districts where there are a lot of random fluctuations that may occur on a grade-to-grade level. And I'll just point out a good example of that at McKinley. So being at 80 to 90% utilization gives you a little bit of headroom and flexibility in the event that you get a particularly large enrollment class. So for McKinley, your first-grade class this school year is 87 students, abnormally large compared to your traditional McKinley grade cohort. However, by operating at that 80 to 90% capacity, you have a little bit of wiggle room and can accommodate that bubble as it moves through the school. Another thing I'd just like to briefly touch on is Connecticut's racial balance law, and racial balance has been something that we've been helping the district analyze over the last few years. So the state's racial balance law is governed by a state statute, and it basically has two different categories. The first is what we'll call impending racial imbalance, and that is any school that deviates from the district average minority composition by between 15 and 25%. That doesn't require corrective action, however, the State Department of Education will send you a letter notifying you that you are impending racial imbalance, and it's generally good to take a look at the trends, whether or not an impending racial imbalance will become a full racial imbalance in the future. The second category is racial imbalance, and that refers to any individual school that has 20, that deviates from the district-wide minority composition by 25% or more. And the state requires that this racial imbalance be addressed and corrected. And we last helped the district update their racial balance plan in 2016. Really, the key element of the updated racial balance plan was that any plan to address racial imbalance at McKinley really needs to be thought of holistically with all of the other facility changes and construction projects going on at the district-wide level. So you weren't necessarily doing one thing at McKinley only to have to redistrict at a later date after construction projects are complete. And I'll touch on those scenarios towards the end of the presentation. So these are your preliminary racial balance numbers based on your October 1st enrollment data set. These are unofficial numbers, this is what we received from the district. The State Department of Education typically releases their numbers in the spring, and those will be your official racial balance numbers. So as has been the case for the last several years, McKinley has a greater than 25% deviation from the district, or the K5 minority composition. Currently, the district's at, the K5 district is at 24.8% minority composition. In order to be under that threshold, McKinley would need to be at under 50%. So currently, you're at 53.2%, so you're off by a few percentage points. Holland Hill, we have as being at exactly 15% deviation from the district-wide minority composition, putting it in that impending imbalance category, again, not requiring corrective action. However, if that number is reported officially by the state, you will be notified as being impending imbalance. All right, now I'm going to pivot over to the enrollment projections, and our standard practice is to always look at how we did the previous year, and if we are off in some way, shape, or form, adjust our projections model accordingly. So on this table, you can see the actual October 1st enrollment on the top and our projected enrollment from last year for October 1st of this year on the bottom. At the elementary school level, we were off by .3%, including only six kindergartners off, so that's very good for us. Kindergarten is typically the hardest to project due to the lack of available data. At the middle school level, we were off by .6%, and at the high school level, we were off by 1.2%. So we're very happy with our projections from last year, they held true, and so we ended up staying on the same trajectory in our projections model for this year. So our projections methodology is based on data from a variety of sources. We obtained birth records from the Connecticut Department of Public Health, we obtained these by address so that we can map them and see how many occur in each of your elementary attendance zones. We obtain your historic enrollment data from both the district and the state, and we also obtain your address-level enrollment information, again, helping us track what's occurring at the micro level. Projections are assumption-dependent. We create a series of different projections models that each have different assumptions, and I'll get into that in a few slides. And the assumptions are really based on the variety of demographic and housing data that we see, and the assumptions are assumed conditions over the next 10 years. So we look at historic unemployment rate, housing permanent activity, home sales, demographic trends such as females of childbearing age, look at trends that are shaping the community now, and make reasonable estimations on what these trends are going to be like in the near future. I always like to show this slide because it shows the cyclical nature of enrollment. So this, in the gray bars, is state of Connecticut public school enrollment from 1960 through 2016. On the orange or reddish-orange line above it, that is the sum of the birth years that align with that enrollment. So for starters, you can see that enrollment aligns very well with birth trends. The second thing I just want to point out is really the boom and bust cycle of enrollment trends that are really tied to the underlying demographics of the state and the nation. You can see the baby boom really driving the increase in enrollment through the 1960s up to 1970. Following, that is the baby bust of the late 1960s through 1970s where the number of births decreased dramatically, and that translated into fewer students. That bottomed out in the late 80s, and then that began to increase again as the eco-boom or millennials began entering the school system, fueling another growth cycle. And that reached a peak statewide in 2004, 2005, however, Fairfield peaked much later in 2012, 2013. And in the recent past, we've been in another trough cycle where throughout the state we've seen enrollment decline. However, you know, our projections only go up 10 years, and I just always like to caveat that as you're making decisions related to long-range planning, keep in mind that cyclical nature and that inevitably, enrollment will go up again, perhaps beyond that 10-year horizon. As the millennial generation ages into the 30s, we're expecting that births will begin to rebound, and that will then kickstart that next growth cycle in enrollment statewide. So our enrollment projections use the cohort survival methodology, and this is an industry standard for conducting enrollment projections and is accepted by the State Department of Education for school construction grant applications. And the underlying premise of the methodology is that it takes data from the recent past in order to predict the near future. And it works very well in stable communities. Fairfield being a very stable community, it's nearly entirely built out, there's not a lot of vacant land that is ripe for development that may have, you know, hundreds of housing units like other parts of the country. So again, a stable community really works well for the cohort survival methodology. And as I alluded to a little bit before, projections models are assumption-based, and in order to capture different scenarios, we develop three projections models, a maximum scenario, a best-fit scenario, and a minimum scenario. And each of these scenarios has different assumptions for future births, housing conditions, economic trends, and in-migration. Another building block of our enrollment projections are what are called persistency ratios. And persistency ratios essentially track the growth or decline in a class as it progresses through the school system. And persistency ratios account for the many external variables that shape school enrollment, such as home sales, residential development, improvement or declines in the economy, and student transfers in and out of the system to private schools. So to give an example, a persistency ratio of 1.05 would translate to a class of 100, growing to 105 students the following year. And this is really built in, this builds in many of the external factors, housing and economic conditions that are shaping enrollment in the district. So this is a table showing your persistency ratios since 2002 through 2003, and there are two columns that are highlighted that I just want to speak to in a little more detail. The first is what we call the birth-to-kay ratio. Unlike the other grades, we don't have a good track record of how many four-year-olds and three-year-olds live in Fairfield, and so births are the best data source available for projecting future kindergarten enrollments. The birth-to-kay compares births from five years prior to current kindergarten enrollments. And as you can see, there's been an increase in the birth-to-kay ratio over the last several years. This past year, it reaching 1.33, which is the highest on record. What we've seen across Fairfield County and in Fairfield as well is that as births have declined, the birth-to-kay ratio has increased. And this basically indicates that a larger proportion of your incoming kindergarten classes have moved to Fairfield after they were born, rather than being born in Fairfield itself. The second column I'd like to point out is the estimate of migration, and this compares the grades 1 through 7 cohort in one year with the grades 2 through 8 cohort in the following year. These are, tend to be the more... These are, tend to be the more stable grades where families are least, are less likely to move in or out of the school system. And we take this as a proxy for migration as a whole. And what you can see is that you've been very stable over the last 10 years with about one, one-half to 1 percent growth every year. To elaborate on the birth and kindergarten trends, this graph in the red shows your kindergarten enrollment by year. On the blue line, it shows your births from five years prior. And what you can see is that as the number of births has declined, the delta between kindergarten enrollment and births has increased, again, alluding to a larger proportion of kindergartners who were born elsewhere and moving to Fairfield between ages 0 and 5. So our projections are assumption-built, and I'll just go over the assumptions that were built into our high, medium, and low models. So for the, the high projections model, we have a projected 23 percent increase in births over the next six years, a dramatic increase in single-family home sales, and a 30 percent reduction in the unemployment rate. For the medium scenario, we have a modest increase in births at about 10 percent over the next 10 years, stable home sales, and a stable economy. And in the low projections, we look at the opposite end of the spectrum. We see a decrease in births from today. We see a decrease in single-family home sales, and we see a dramatic uptick in the unemployment rate. And based on the data that we've reviewed, we believe that the medium projections model best aligns with the demographic, economic, and housing data that we see. Another important variable that goes into the projections model is birth projections. Again, this is really the, the best proxy for projecting your kindergarten enrollments over the next 10 years. We do have, because we have birth data through 2017, we can reasonably project kindergarten classes through 2022. However, for the last five years of the projections, we need to develop models to project future births. And like the projections models themselves, we developed a high, medium, and low model reflecting different economic and housing conditions. One of the things that we expect to see in the next few years is bottoming out in births and a slow rebound. And driving this is the large millennial generation, which, towards the tail end of the projections, so corresponding to the 2022 birth year, will begin moving into their 30s. And in Fairfield, people tend to have children at a later age, and so as that larger 30 to 35 generation ages, we expect births to increase accordingly. All right, so this is the 10-year enrollment projections district-wide. In blue, you see a historical lookback back to 2008, 2009. In the orange, the dashed orange, that is the medium or best-fit projections model, what we believe is the most likely to happen. And in faint gray, we have our maximum and our minimum. We have a green area that runs from 2017, 18 up to 22, 20, 22, 23. And this, these are our projections that are based on known birth data. So we have reasonable confidence that, that these will come true. And as you note, as you can notice, the difference between the high, medium, and low projections model is very little. They're very close together. However, when we move into the last five years of the projections model, we're basing this on projected birth data, you can see that the high, medium, and low projections model begin to separate. We typically strive for between 1 percent accuracy each year, and that is reflected with the gradual splitting of the high, medium, and low projections models. District-wide, what you can see on this chart is that beginning in 2024, 25, you're basically bottoming out. The decline that's happened over the last several years is projected to end with the rebound beginning at the elementary school level first. So this is the same type of layout, except this is only your K5 enrollment. So our, our projections estimate that your elementary school enrollment will bottom out in 2022, 23, and then begin a gradual uptick to just under 4,400 by 2027, 28. A good proxy, last year, you were just over 4,400 K5 students, just to give you an idea of what that would look like and how that would translate to your facilities. Again, we have a separation of that high, medium, and low model as we get further out in the projections. So this shows by-grade projections, and again, highlighting where we have projections based on known data, where we have projections based on preliminary birth data, and where we're using our projected births. This is a good side-by-side comparison for looking at differences between elementary, middle, and high school enrollments as well. As I mentioned earlier, we're expecting elementary school enrollment to reach the bottom first in 22, 2022, 23. Middle school enrollment, we're projecting to reach its low in 2024, 25 at just over 2,100 students. And the high schools, we're projecting will decline throughout the 10-year horizon, so not reaching that bottom point within 10 years. We also develop projections for individual schools. And like the district-wide projections, we're most confident in the first five years when we're basing it on known birth data. And some of the main trends is we're continuing to see pretty even enrollment growth or declines throughout all the schools in the near term, and then a gradual uptick across all schools over the last five years of the projections horizon. Again, reaching the bottom first and beginning that rebound first. So this is where we're taking a look at enrollment relative to that operational capacity. So as a refresher, the operational capacity does not include the portable classrooms at Mill Hill, and it also accounts for the placement of CLC and pre-K at certain facilities. And two schools really stand out. Mill Hill, of course, because, because the portables were deducted, the utilization remains very high over the next 10 years. And similarly, Roger Sherman operating at or near 100 percent throughout the projections horizon. At a district-wide level, we're projecting that your overall utilization is going to reach 89.5 percent based on your current capacity. So again, within that 80 to 90 percent comfort zone. At the middle school level, we project that the enrollment decline will occur up to 24, 25, with the rebound beginning in the last three years of the projections horizon. One thing to note is that we project Fairfield Woods declining at a much faster rate than Roger Ludlow and Tom, Tomlinson. Middle school utilization, again, we're expecting that utilization to drop as enrollment declines over the next several years and reaching that comfortable 89 to 90 percent. So really, the facilities are well in line with projected utilization over the next decade. And finally, the high schools. We're projecting high schools to continually decline over the next 10 years. We know that you have several students in the alternative ed program. We can't reasonably project such a small sample size, so our assumption was that this program would stay the same size throughout the 10-year horizon. In reality, it's going to fluctuate based on need. What we see is that as those smaller, current elementary school classes begin moving up, they're going to move into the high school. And because those larger cohorts will begin entering elementary school in 2022, 23, and beyond, we're not expecting the high school to see that rebound until well beyond our 10-year horizon. Again, high schools are well utilized today, and we expect that that's going to decline and maintain, is going to really be at a comfortable level throughout the projections horizon. Again, utilization, we're projecting to drop at Fairfield Ward much faster than Fairfield Ludlow. All right, and finally, I'll discuss the scenario planning that we've conducted with the district over the last several years. And I always like to start by saying that none of the scenarios that we conduct are recommendations. They're an exercise that we do in order to give you as decision-makers information about potential options, so that you fully understand redistricting impacts, impacts to facilities, et cetera. So back in 2015, we were hired by the district to look at options relating to the racial imbalance at McKinley Elementary School. And our overall goal was to reduce racial imbalance at McKinley to below 20 percent of the district, district-wide average. So we wanted to build in that 5 percent buffer. So reducing McKinley under 25 percent deviation would correct the racial imbalance. However, it may not be sustainable in the long term, and a few years later, you may be back at SDE. By, we set the benchmark as 20 percent racial, or 20 percent deviation as the cutoff for whether or not a, a scenario was sustainable in the long term. And that really drove the process. We had several guiding principles that were approved by the Board of Ed and the Redistricting Committee, but again, these were really secondary to the goal of addressing racial imbalance at McKinley. So these looked at a range of redistricting scenarios that were tied to your long-range facilities plan. And what we found was that there were two redistricting scenarios that were determined to be viable at the time. Both required school construction projects at Holland Hill and Mill Hill to be completed at 504 students in order to have adequate space to redistrict. It would have significant redistricting impacts at, excuse me, about 1 in 5 elementary school students. It was very important that the two 504-student construction projects be complete because having that extra capacity at two buildings, Holland Hill and Mill Hill, made the redistricting process easier. We're very cognizant that Fairfield operates a neighborhood-based elementary school system, and having extra capacity gives you that flexibility to retain that neighborhood-based system to the greatest extent possible. In 2017, 18, again, we kept the lens of looking at the racial imbalance at McKinley. However, we also put on equal footing the overcrowding issues at Mill Hill and Roger Sherman, the phasing out of portable classrooms, as well as recognizing that the new state budget's out, and there are some new financial realities that need to be considered. And we tested school closures, school pairing, pocket redistricting, and grade reconfiguration options. And again, these are not recommendations, but merely informational exercises that are meant to help you understand the impacts associated with different actions. So all scenarios were tested using the October 1, 2017 enrollment data, and we assigned students to these new hypothetical boundaries. We use that operational capacity, understanding that any long-term facilities and enrollment decision needs to align with that ed spec. So we assumed all portables were taken offline, and all schools meet the ed spec. We noted when there may need to be shifts in district-wide programs such as CLC and pre-K. And we also utilize the new Holland Hill school capacity at 504 students. So several scenarios we looked at at a very high level and determined that they're not feasible in the next 10 years based on the enrollment projections. The first is moving 6th grade down to the elementary schools. There's simply not enough space in the elementary schools over the next 10 years for this to be feasible, especially as we begin to see that uptick in K5 enrollment. We do not see closing a middle school as feasible, as well based on the 10-year enrollment projections. The middle schools are very large buildings, so closing one essentially means your enrollment would have to drop in half in order for it to work. Moving 6th grade down was a way of testing to see if perhaps a grade reconfiguration and a middle school consolidation could work, but because it wouldn't work at the elementary level, we don't see closing a middle school as feasible. And closing a high school, again, not, not feasible based on our 10-year enrollment projections. Again, the high schools are large facilities. Taking that many seats offline is, is not possible based on our enrollment projections. We took a deeper dive on six different scenarios, each testing different things. We had two scenarios which tested the closure of schools. We used Jennings and Dwight as our two test cases because these schools are proximate to many other schools, so we were able to minimize redistricting impacts. Other schools could potentially be closed, but at a much greater, much greater redistricting impact. We took a look at pocket redistricting, the Roger Sherman district, in order to reduce overcrowding at that school, and we were able to, to achieve this. And with Holland Hill having some excess capacity once the construction project is complete, and Mill Hill potentially having excess capacity once its construction project is complete, both of those schools touch Roger Sherman, so very feasible to carve off a small area of that district and send it to the new schools to alleviate overcrowding. We looked at a school pairing option as a way to address racial imbalance at McKinley. We paired McKinley and Jennings due to their proximity to one another, and we tested a K2, 3, 5 alignment with Jennings being a K2, McKinley being a 3, 5. And we found that this was a, able to get McKinley down to about 15 percent racial imbalance. Jennings would also become about 15 percent racial imbalance, but a long-term solution to, to the district's racial imbalance problem. However, there are educational impacts to that, you know, with that being the only school that has an extra transition, as well as being set up a little differently than the other schools. Another thing that we looked at is whether or not any of these scenarios would have impacts to the middle school feeder pattern, knowing that your current elementary school districts feed into the middle schools, and any major redistricting will have impacts there. And so the school pairing has significant feeder pattern impacts because Jennings and McKinley go to different middle schools. So all of a sudden, you could have 5th graders at the McKinley-Jennings district going to two separate middle schools, so different than the remaining elementary schools. We tested a pocket redistricting scenario for McKinley to see if we can address racial imbalance that way. We were able to get McKinley under 25 percent, but not below that 20 percent threshold. So we don't believe that pocket redistricting is a sustainable, long-term solution to addressing racial imbalance. And very briefly looked at the K4, 5, 8 alignment, moving 5th grade up to the middle schools. And again, due to lack of space at the middle schools, determined that this was not, not feasible based on the 10-year enrollment projections. So this matrix basically lined, shows the many pros and cons associated with these different scenarios, and there are, there are cons associated with all of them. The presentation that we gave to the committee in October is on the website if you want to see any of the maps and additional information associated with these scenarios. And with that, I'm happy to take any of your questions. And get some water.
So let's entertain some questions at the moment. Mr. Gallagher will be staying here through the ed specs discussion and the facility discussion. And so we have several parents here who may be interested in us getting to the ed specs discussion. So why don't we start with some questions, but he'll stay here, so other questions that come up during the ed specs or facility planning, he'll be available. With that said, who would like to ask a question? Or a comment? And I'll say the other thing is that the slides that we went through, as typical, we will post those on the website tomorrow, tomorrow. For those of you who didn't memorize them all, Ms. Peterson.
Well, just one question, one comment to you. I think it would be nice for us on the board to get a hard copy, if possible, of this presentation. I'm working with the one, the enrollment presentation from November.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I can't really hear you.
I guess you're not close enough to the microphone.
In any event, I, it would be nice to have a full present, full hard copy presentation of this.
Fair enough.
I had a lot of questions on the, on the November presentation, and that some of that is included, and you did answer a lot of my questions in your presentation, so I appreciate that. It seems like the key factor in, in your projections for climbing enrollment after several years of, of decline is the millennials starting families elsewhere and moving into family with kids ready to go to kindergarten. Is that, is that the basic scenario?
Yeah, so really... Yeah, so really, we're seeing that the growing, it's a growing proportion of kindergarteners who are born elsewhere. Because enrollments declined, that may mean fewer families compared to 15 years ago are moving, but they make up a greater proportion of the kindergartners who are enrolling in school. And, and we expect that, you know, right now, the millennials are, you know, in their early twenties through early thirties. Housing is expensive in Fairfield County. As those folks age into their thirties, housing may become more attainable in Fairfield County, and therefore, we may see, that may be also one of the driving factors.
I guess another question I had was, I wonder how you account for kind of the changing mix of families? I mean, kind of the scenario that you, again, seems to be like the driving force, sort of assumes maybe, you know, a family moves with one or two small children, you know, but at the same time, in kind of a broader sense in Fairfield, there's, you know, families that are, you know, may move out after their kids leave high school, or may stay here until their elder years. Is there, is there any kind of way that you account for that kind of balance?
Yeah, so those are really built in to the persistency ratios. That accounts for people selling their homes, new families moving in, in migration, out migration, et cetera. So that's really baked into the underlying projections model. And because we use historic data, it would basically mean that the recent past is a good reflection of the near future.
And I guess I have one other question that probably is unanswerable, which is that, is there, has there been any thought to the possibility of adding into presentation, into your projections, something to deal with an unforeseen spike? I kind of have a very specific idea in mind, whether that we may see a large influx of people, families with children from Puerto Rico, given where we are in Connecticut and, you know, the school system that we offer. Again, it's an impossible thing to predict, but it's a factor I think that we need to think of going forward. And from a historical basis, we received a big chunk of Hungarian immigrants in the 1950s that I think had a large impact on population in town, so.
Yeah, I don't know of a good way of baking that in. It's, it's one of those unknowns that, you know.
No, I understand. I kind of want to get it out there.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Leeper.
Can I ask a follow-up question to Mr. Peterson's question? I just want to make sure I understood your question correctly, that you were asking about the bulk of our increase being reliant on families moving to Fairfield after they have children.
Well, it's, it just seemed to me, based on the, the presentation, that that's, that was where, because what I was looking at was basically declining birth rate in town. And so, but yet, over the long period of time, over the 10-year time horizon, seeing the K-3, 5 number going up. And so I was trying to square those factors.
I just wanted to make sure I wasn't mischaracterizing your point before I asked my question. So, correct me if I was mistaken, but I thought your predictions have the birth rate going up, and also the persistency ratio going up, two separate increases. Is that not accurate?
So, we, what we did was, we, the median model, the, the one that was shown in the detail tables, that has births going up by about 10% in 2027, 28, so that 10th year of the horizon. What we do, or what we've seen in the last few years is that there is a, a pretty significant relationship between the size of the birth cohort and the persistency ratio. So a smaller birth class is going to have a higher persistency ratio than a larger birth class. So what we did in the projections model this year is we basically adjusted the birth decay depending on the size of the birth cohort. So as our projections show larger birth cohorts coming, in the last five years of the projections, we ramped down that birth decay, so essentially, we weren't double counting.
I would imagine our proximity to New York City also, when you think about the increase of urban living, and also after the great recession of people going to the cities to get jobs, and then getting to more late childbearing years, and starting their families and moving out would probably uniquely affect Fairfield County, but Fairfield also, as you mentioned, the more affordable housing. But I also was wondering, can I ask another non-related question?
Please do.
How, could you explain how you arrived at that 10% median growth over the next six years?
Yeah, so we develop regression models for our births, and we test a range of housing and economic scenarios. I believe, let me see if I can go back and find the variables that we use. So like the projections, they are based on historic data to see how well births line up with housing and economic characteristics. We choose the characteristics that line up the best, and then we make reasonable assumptions based on what we've seen. So for example, extrapolating out what home sales will be like in year 2022. And that feeds the regression model, and then the birth model.
One more?
You have the floor until you yield.
Thank you. And then, in which ways, or if in any ways, did you factor in G's departure into your assumptions?
So we didn't do anything special. However, something like that would be baked in, again, to those persistency ratios. If there was a large exodus of people out of Fairfield, the persistency ratios would reflect that.
Other board members have questions? Mrs. Vitale.
This, you may not have an answer to this. Are you seeing any surprises due to the cuts in state funding to education, and how districts are handling that? People leaving, you know, certain districts going to other districts that you may not have anticipated four years ago?
I haven't really gotten my head into that specifically. Those changes have occurred recently too, so I suspect any, any major impacts to that, such as folks leaving the state, I, we wouldn't be able to see in this year's enrollment data. Perhaps, a few years down the line, we could.
Do you mind if, is that a follow-up to that question?
So Jen's, wait first.
Go ahead, and then, Mrs. Jacobson.
Thank you. We keep talking about housing. I just wanted to know, to clarify, have any of the models taken into the account, the 830G affordable housing that we need to meet?
They have not, no.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Jacobson.
My first question is, so if this one's very quick. Not online.
Yeah, it's working.
Well, hello, everybody. Okay, just so I'm clear, on your projections, are, are you're not just using the birth rate data then any longer? It actually has, the numbers that you've provided for the 10 years include non-birth-rate data?
Correct. So when we're projecting kindergarteners, we're factoring in children who were born in Fairfield, as well as that birth decay, which accounts for folks who move in.
Okay, great, thank you. My second question is, when you, the slide where it had how close you were between our actual and your projection, what presentation are you using for those numbers?
So I actually don't even know if we included that in the slide deck that we gave. I don't, I don't believe that was presented in the fall at the committee, because we didn't have the projections updated. I don't even know if we included that in the packet we gave you. So this may be the first time that it's in a public presentation.
But, so I went back to your February 2016 projections, which was only exactly two years ago, basically, and looked at just our pre-K5. You include pre-K, you include CLC, do you include ECC?
So any student who is enrolled in Fairfield Public Schools, whether they're in, whether they're in CLC or another specialized program, we account for them in the enrollment projections. Unless they attend an out-of-district program, in which case, we don't. We do not.
Okay, so ECC is in both February and in now, February 2016 and this current one, yes?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm just a little confused, because February 2016, you had our pre-K5 at 4176 for this school year. We currently today sit at 4460. So we are off by over 200 students in just a two-year time period. These are 10-year projections.
Yes.
So how do we account for, and that's just elementary level, how do we account for being off by that many?
So the projections that were shown this year for elementary schools do not include pre-K, for starters. It's just K-5. Pre-K is included in the district-wide number. And secondly, I believe those projections were from two school years ago, correct? So 2015, 16?
Yeah, it was the February 2016 presentation.
Yeah, so we, we did the same thing we did this year. We, we took a look at how we did relative to actual enrollments, and then we updated our assumptions for the methodology last school year, based on new data that we had. And we believe that we've corrected for any, any unforeseen issues that we had in the projections two years ago.
It's fair to say, given your presentation, and historically, we trend higher than nor, than even a projection would project, especially at our elementary level, right?
The, the biggest.
It's a fair, it's a fair statement to say that, over historically, we, we go higher.
More, more districts that we work with trend higher than lower.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli.
And I apologize if you covered this already, I can't recall seeing it in there. In, in which of the factors were the assumptions off that accounted for most of the discrepancy?
So the biggest discrepancy was births. So the birth models were updated. Let me go to the slide here. So back in 2015, when we had our, when we developed our projections, I believe it was a year where your births were on an uptick. And so we assumed at the time that that kind of upward trend would continue. What we've seen is that it's gone up and down. That upward trend hasn't continued, and that upward trend was fed into the projections, and we've since lowered our, our birth estimates that are feeding the enrollment projections. That, that's really the main driver behind the differences.
But don't we have more students than we expected? So where, where is it off that accounted for the fact that we have more?
Sorry, so in our 2015 projections, going 10 years out, had many more, or had more students than we're projecting now. I, I misinterpreted your question, sorry.
Okay, it's okay.
So our previous projections basically had a steeper decline and a sharper rise. And that was largely due to the birth data, as well as the birth decay ratio. So what we've seen is, the birth decay has continued to rise, so kindergarten classes have been larger than historically, or the, the number of kindergarteners is larger than the number of births would lead us to believe. And the birth model has been updated, so that rather than kind of dropping and ticking up, you're doing a more gradual decline and a more gradual uptick.
And so, just to, to separate those two, there are the updating the model, and then there's the hard data which was off. And so the hard data which was off was that more student, more children and families moved into town than had been part of the original projections. Is that correct?
Yes, if we were, if there were more students actually than projected, that would, that would mean that more students moved into the district.
Because it, what you're saying is that it was not that the birth rate prediction was wrong. In fact, there were fewer births, therefore, there's actually a larger number that's the result of people, families moving to town with children.
So yeah, presumably, the persistency ratios were higher than we modeled.
Okay.
Can I interrupt just for one moment?
Sure.
This is probably a key point, and if there are 500 different data points that you look at in assumptions, I wonder if it might be helpful to the board if we asked Malone and McBroom to kind of answer that question in writing, so that there's no confusion as to what the question is.
Yeah, I apologize for.
No, it's, it's.
Any confusion.
I just want to clarify, because it seems as though, that's an important point.
Well, I think it's, it's, it's an important, where I'm, first of all, just wanting to gain the understanding of this, but also, it's vital to our whole macro discussion of budget and facilities. And that's the notion that I would choose to analyze that or infer, that since we aren't having a booming industry surge in Fairfield, what is it that is bringing these families to Fairfield? And I think there is one neon lights answer to that, and that is our schools. And that's not, don't worry, I'm not asking you to weigh in on that one. So.
Perhaps Mrs., Ms. Leeper would like to comment. She might have some personal experience.
And, and I think she, she has commented about it, and I think many of us have it. So that's, I just want to make sure that the data is there, that the facts are there, which would support an argument, because we say it all the time, families move here for the education, and here we have some hard data that in fact, they are, it's at such a number that it's not breaking the model, but it is defying the model. And we don't keep a strong school system, et cetera, et cetera. That won't be what I'll say in front of other town boards, but.
Can I interrupt you for one moment? Do you want to follow up on that particular point?
What the data, the wording you're looking for, I just.
I know you mentioned it, and I'm sure a lot of us agree, that you're seeing an influx of people moving in who are having children. What I want to know is, what schools, what elementary schools that will affect? Because if we're talking about facilities and redistricting, we need to know what areas of towns, and I'm sure we all kind of know, but statistically, what areas of town are they moving to when we're talking about facilities?
So that when we get the, the data that Mr. Dryer asked in writing for us, I, I agree with Ms. Pitco, I think that would be very valuable. It's, what are the births predicting per school, and what is that move-in number? Where is that off? I agree, that would be very valuable to hear. And I was wondering, in determining that best-fit model, housing numbers and the housing sales is part of that, of how you determine that model as well? Is that correct?
Let me see here. I'll go to my assumption slide here.
Do you have any questions?
I remember it being a single, kind of.
So yeah, well, housing conditions, for starters, are always baked into the persistency ratios in one way, shape, or form. Home sales were also in the regression model in the birth projections.
Because, once again, not to really make this be a huge data dump, but, you know, that those, that, that, those real estate numbers as part of this, I think would also be valuable, as we're looking at the big picture of the district. And then, my other question, when, when you were deciding with Mill Hill specifically, to go for that 273 number as the capacity, where, and I was attempting to quote you, and I know I failed, but the idea that the support classrooms for the support services, that they took priority over general ed when you were determining that 273, how did you come to the decision to do that?
So the ed spec, when we were aligning the schools with the ed spec, we determined that the support functions were essential for every school, and that when you're building a new school, you build the new school to have the necessary support functions. So for Mill Hill, in order for Mill Hill to have the same support functions as your other schools, you would need to have fewer instructional classrooms to make that work. In reality, you're not going to push out an instructional room for a support service, but in our exercise, which is really about long-term planning, we want to plan adequately, so that we know that all schools are on equal footing when it comes to the support services. So that was really the impetus behind the 273.
And, and that now makes a lot of sense, and you took the words out of my mouth, which I'll be using later, which is the idea of reality. So I understand where the 273 is coming from, and accept the acknowledgement that that's never what we would do. Thank you.
I made a private comment. I don't know whether Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli would want me to say it publicly, but, you know, when you design spaces, and you say, okay, we'll design a space, and then we'll adapt it for people with handicapped special needs, what happens to a society that says, we're going to design a building for special needs populations, and then adapt it the other way? It's a different look, way of looking at things. And if we place, as, from my perspective, if we place true value on the, all the little rooms that add up to deliver services to people who need them in smaller settings, then if we don't build addition at Mill Hill, and we value those services, then the end result is, it only has a capacity of 273. We would never want to get there, because we want to put an addition on Mill, Mill Hill to solve both problems. But if suddenly, the board who advocates, and the Board of Selectment and Board of Finance that decides, can we afford, and the RTM says, but we're not willing to pay for it, that would, we would get stuck. And so I, I think it's an important philosophical discussion, but it's probably a reality that this town won't allow itself to come to, hopefully. Can I get one or two more questions, and then we'll go to the public and the other issues? And we can, we can continue to talk about this as we move through specifications and, and facility planning, but I want to be mindful of some people in the public who might have other places to go. Ms. Pitco.
So recently, Mrs. Leeper and I attended a Fairfield Economic Development Workshop, and it was a lot of data on our town. It was very enlightening to read. The one thing that I got from all of their data and all of your projections tonight is, there are a lot of variables, when you agree, that go into this. So when we're looking ahead, for instance, there's two developments being built in the Mill Hill area. Mill Hill area right now for A30G that you just said were not accounted for in this. And I think that we should consider that.
How many more, so I have a sense? One? Okay, you get the last question.
Just to build on to that, are there any develop, like, known developments that you look into? Not necessarily specific types, but just, that are underway in a specific community? Do you look into those in your projections?
It depends on the size. If it's something that is much larger than anything in the recent past, that we feel is not baked into that persistency ratio, we will sometimes do what we call multipliers, where we estimate how many students will come from those developments, and then add them in.
Thank you. Just to follow this. Really quick.
Ms. Vatali?
Just looking at real estate, what about not necessarily a new development, but a neighborhood that you can tell is going to turn over? I think Fairfield, we have a lot of just capes that, you know, two small lots get built, you know, consolidated into one lot, and a huge colonial is going up there. And I've seen that, living in town for over 20 years, it just seems to be sprawling. And that's how the new development happens in this town. Is there any, do you look at those type of things, like neighborhoods that are likely to turn over and possibly get larger?
So, those are baked into the persistency ratios as well. I know I've said that a lot tonight. But home sales, turnover, in-migration, out-migration, those are all really baked into the underlying assumptions that are feeding the projections models. We have to rely on observed data from the past in our projections, so we typically don't escalate persistency ratios to account for perhaps future higher turnover.
You had your last shot. Ms. Leeper, one last.
As somebody who likes econometrics, is there a place where we can actually get the assumptions in, like, the full models? Do you guys publish that, or is that like the secret sauce?
So typically, we're happy to share any of the background data that goes into it, but the models themselves are proprietary. But we're happy to share any of the data that goes into them all, absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. So, again, have a seat and listen, and if a board member, in the course of talking about any of the specifications, or the facility considerations discussion, has a question that they want to pose back to Malone and McBroom, we'll call that person forward, okay? Having said that, on to public comment on business items. For those of you who have not been here before, you can comment now on a subject, but if you do, at the time of the vote on that subject, you don't get a second shot. So, you either choose to do it now, or you choose to do it at the time of the vote, based on what you prefer. So, having said that, first come, first served. Please step forward, state your name and address.
Hi, Steve O'Brien, I live on Lisbon Drive here in Fairfield. I'm also a history teacher at Ward, and I wanted to speak just briefly to the political activities policy that is, or guidelines that are being considered. I feel a level of anxiety about this. The way that they've been written, I read the guidelines before coming to the meeting, they are reasonable. I don't consider them to be impractical in application. The concern that I have is the way, the metric, I guess, that would be used in measuring whether or not a teacher is complying with the guidelines. The behaviors that would be involved, that would need to be measured, are, in a lot of ways, so subjective, that I think that the, that teachers might struggle to understand exactly whether, whether or not they're complying. I think administrators might have some trouble measuring whether or not that compliance is there as well. So, I think, I understand that you don't want teachers to be proselytizing, that's not good teaching. But I'm concerned about the door that's opened if we decide to measure something that is, as I've mentioned, as subjective as it is. I'd be concerned also about the impact that this would potentially have on parents, who would also be looking at the subjective kind of quality of the guidelines, and see this as a door open to them simply objecting to something that a teacher is teaching because of a source that is used or isn't, or a topic that is broached or isn't. So, I hope that you'll, you'll take that into account. I imagine that this is likely to be a policy that is going to be, some version of this is going to end up being passed. Can I ask just one request, and I'll make it quick?
You can make a request, not ask a question, yes.
Rock and roll, I will do exactly that. There is one part of the policy that reads, "The discussion of and study of politics and political issues, when such discussion and study are appropriate to classroom studies, such as history, civics, current events, and political science." These are exempt from prohibitions of the policy. I would ask that you consider changing that to, "Such as, but not, but, how do I want to say this?"
Not limited to?
Not limited to, thank you very kindly. Not limited to. I would suggest that English definitely has to be in there, the humanities are all about passion in teaching, passion that could be misconstrued as being indoctrination, as it's mentioned in the guidelines. I know that this is stuff that is also topics that can be broached in science as well, as well. So, I would ask that you include that.
Okay, thank you. We have a three-minute time limit, and you're over.
I'm over. I got you. I beg your pardon, and I thank you very kindly for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward to talk on an agenda item? Please state your name and address.
Good evening, Frank Sahagian, 20 Chelsea Street. I, too, is an eighth-grade social studies teacher, teaching U.S. history, when this topic of political activities of schools' employees obviously caught my attention on the agenda tonight. And when the topic does come up for discussion, I would appreciate, I for one would appreciate, knowing more about the impetus behind this policy going into place as well. So, Steve, I applaud the specific statement about the encouragement to perform our civic duties commensurate with the democratic ideals, and I appreciate the way in which a number of the points were put forward, written in a positive way, as what we shall do. And I would add that the shall-nots really don't scare me as well, they make sense, from what I've seen. I do have one point, though, that I think is worth further review and discussion, especially in this current environment that we live in today. And it's Point E. under the "Engagement as Part of the Instructional Program" section, where it reads, quote, "A teacher may express his or her opinions in regard to political, social, and religious values or issues, provided that the presentation is essentially balanced and fair." So, in the classroom, we continually try to impress upon our students the importance of backing up opinions with evidence, in social studies in particular. And the challenge today is, the norms have been so upended, that the question arises as to what is balanced and fair? Is our editor, I'm sorry, are articles in the New York Times considered a balanced source, in the Washington Post? So, if you select something from CNN, do you have to balance it out with another episode from Fox News? You know, we just finished a unit in eighth grade here, which included the topic of immigration at the turn of the 20th century. But whenever possible, we look to make topics relevant by talking about the issue today. Now, I used a source from the Anti-Defamation League outlining myths and facts about immigration today. Would that be considered balanced and fair? As much of it flies in the face about what's being promoted today? With the myths like immigrants are bringing crime and violence, or all undocumented immigrants sneak across the Mexican border, and the obvious one about the best way to stop undocumented immigrants by building the wall? So, you may want to consider changing balanced and fair, because I don't really know what that means, so much to support it with facts and disclosure of sources. Which leads to the second part of Point E., which I think is worth considering or scrapping altogether. That last sentence in that point, "He or she shall not use professional interaction with students to further his or own political aims or views of those of any other individual or group." So, continue with this topic of immigration for a second. We just discussed Dreamers and DACA in class. And while I certainly did point out the arguments for the decision already made, calling for the end of the DACA protections, students ask me, "So, Mr. Sahagian, what do you think? Can I possibly answer that question and abide by the directive?" So, I ask you to look more closely and reconsider Point E. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please come forward, state your name and address.
Hello again, everybody. John Whaley. I'm an English teacher at Fairfield Ward, I'm a Black Rock resident. When I became an English teacher, one of the things I had to do was to be accredited from NCTE and NCATE. And part of the accreditation process includes this, "Candidates demonstrate knowledge of how theories and research about social justice, diversity, equity, student identities, and schools as institutions can enhance students' opportunities to learn in English language arts. It also includes language that promotes social justice and critical engagement with complex issues related to maintaining a diverse, inclusive, equitable society," and so on. There's more. However, in this political, this policy on political activity, I noticed some sort of red-flag-ish type of language that I just wanted to comment upon and make it public. "In the Community Relations Individual Responsibility in Participating in Political Functions, Section A, Employees Engaging in Political Activities Shall Not," number one, it says, "Engage in political activities on school premises during school hours or at school events." My first question is, and again, you don't have to answer it now, just a question to ask, how is political activities defined? Some might assume that issues of social justice, for example, inclusion of special education students in our mainstream classes, respecting the customs and traditions of non-majority students' religious or political beliefs, discussing institutional racism, et cetera, are political activities. Considering that English teachers are quite literally taught to engage in these types of ethical practices, it's imperative this language is either omitted or clarified. Four, poll their students to determine how their parents are voting on any issue. My question for that is, can we not poll our students anonymously to discuss class makeup, philosophies of spouse, and societal norms? This seems a far-too-large brush stroke to simply be aimed at discouraging local political candidates from using their classes as strategic marketplace or for data mining. This language needs to be omitted or clarified. And finally, shall not attempt to indoctrinate students with personal, political, or social philosophy? That needs to be omitted outright. The undeniable room for interpretation of indoctrinate, personal philosophy, political philosophy, and social philosophy are not just problematic. These overtly vague terms all but stifle any sort of discussions regarding society at large in any of our classrooms. How would, for example, everyone has the right to vote in an election, not be codified as indoctrinating personal, political, or social philosophy? And that's quite literally the most innocuous one. Further, in political materials and/or engagement as part of the instructional program, there are numerous clauses and phrases that either need to be omitted or clarified. For example, like Frank said, balanced and fair, quote, "The intellectual ability of students," and quote, "Use professional interaction with students to further his or her own political aims or views of those of any other individual or group." Based on that last phrase, would I not be able to further Emerson's ideas of transcendentalism in my language and composition class? And the last thing I'll say is this, regarding community relations, political activities in the schools slash on-school board property, Section 3., use or distribution of political materials during school hours or on school grounds, Part D., it says, "Student distribution or display of political material that is disrupted of the educational environment is not permitted." This means, in my interpretation, that somebody with a Make America Great Again sticker or hat on in class could be subject to disciplinary action. And I just want to clarify if that's the case. You don't have to answer those questions, obviously, now, I just wanted to throw it out there. Thank you very much.
Who else would like to come forward, talk about an agenda item? State your name and address.
Bob Smoller, President of the FEA, and it seems like our hot topic tonight is the political activity policy. I do want to thank members of the board who have allowed us to look at the policy. I'm not going to get as detailed as some of the social studies and English teachers, I think they've eloquently expressed some of the concerns they have. I think I would just argue for narrowing this policy down. I understand the need for it, but there are too many possible situations to include in a policy. And I think, you know, some of the things that the policy is attempting to accomplish could probably be handled by just one broad stroke saying, you know, "If you think that you're over the line, contact administration, and, you know, see if you are over the line." I would try to keep this as narrow as possible, if there are specific goals in mind, like you don't want people, you know, using school grounds for collecting petitions or things like that. Obviously, a political activity associated with electing a politician, you know, might be something appropriate to be addressed. But once you start edging into the classroom, and talking about what could or could not be discussed in the classroom, even the hint of a policy that would leave a teacher wondering, "Should I take some risks? Should I, should I try to expand my discussions in the classroom?" That's where I think we get a little awry here. And so, you know, those are discussions, whether you're, whether you're crossing the boundary or not, that's a discussion that a teacher can have with their housemaster, with a principal, or the superintendent, and get some guidelines on that without having it dictated in policy. So, I would caution, I would encourage you to maybe talk, maybe specify the things that you really, really don't want, and then leave the rest of it open to a discussion among the school system about what's appropriate and what's not. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else that wishes to come forward and speak on a topic of interest to them that's on the agenda? Please state your name and address.
Jill Vergara, 271 Old Post Road. I'm also a BOE rep for Sherman PTA, and I'm a representative on the RTM for District 7. I wanted to come and thank you so much for moving so quickly on the Board of Selectmen's requests. I thought it was fantastic that you held the meeting last week, and so now we're able to stay on track. It was nerve-wracking for me, and I think a lot of parents, for that to happen, and I'm so relieved that you've taken this onto your agenda. Thank you. I also just wanted to make a note for the waterfall chart that was included as enclosure number five. It's dated February 13, 2018, but it doesn't have the most recent number for Sherman. Sherman's listed for 3 million, it should be 3.2 million in the waterfall chart. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward to talk on a topic? So, please come forward, state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Michelle DiMartino of 99 Patrick Drive. I am a Mill Hill parent, and I am the co-president-elect, so I will be president next year, so you will be seeing a lot of me over the next few years. I have a son in sixth grade, I have a son in third grade, and I have a daughter who's in kindergarten. Back in January of 2007, my husband and I purchased our first home here in Fairfield, when our oldest was a baby. We chose Mill Hill because of its close proximity to the beach, town, and train, and because its distinct blue ribbon status that Mill Hill was awarded back in 2003. Looking back at the application, I saw that Mill Hill was described as a beautiful facility. That was in Part 3. summary. Unfortunately, I would no longer describe our facility this way. I believe our staff and PTA does its best to decorate our halls and our classrooms, and we gave our staff lounge a well-deserved makeover last year. But is that really enough? To a visitor, our school looks amazing. Our playground is fantastic, we have an all-abilities playground, we have a beautifully maintained Little League baseball field. But to the children of Mill Hill, it's not just the outside that matters, it's also the inside. Last year, when my son was in fifth grade, his portable was affectionately named Siberia. They were not connected to any of the other fifth-grade portables, and they were out on their own. Fifth graders had to walk outside in the cold, the rain, and the snow to switch classes. If they had to use the restroom, sorry, you have to go outside and re-enter the building. And due to safety concerns, a tall, black fence was built. The need for security is understood and appreciated, but the kids see it as a prison, like they're in a cage. And although my oldest definitely enjoyed the independence of switching classes and getting fresh air outside, the reality is, the portables are aged, and air quality is absolutely an issue. Mill Hill School needs this renovation to be equitable to all the other elementary schools in town. We will be the only school with remaining portables. I recently asked my third grader and kindergartner how they would improve Mill Hill, and they both immediately said, "Water fountains." I should say, my kindergarten daughter did first say that she would improve Mill Hill by adding an ice cream shop and an indoor swimming pool. However, once I redirected her, I said, she then said, "I wish they would fix the water fountain near PE and the one near the lunchroom. I wish they had cold water, the water is too warm." To which point, my sixth grader also chimed in and said, "Yeah, the water was really warm last year, too." So, this has been an ongoing issue we've had. My kindergartner continued with, "I wish that," and these were her's exact words- My kindergartner continued with, "I wish that," and these were her exact words, "I wish that where you got your hot lunch from was a little bigger. I want our whole class to fit in the hot lunchroom. It's too small and squishy. It takes so long, and people don't even get to eat their lunch if they were at the end of the line."
I'm sorry to interrupt on your student description, but the three minutes has expired. Do you have one more sentence or two?
Yep, I have just one more sentence. So I just want to say, imagine the unnecessary stress students may feel worrying that they may not have time to eat, or worse, actually running out of time. The lack of lunch line space is unacceptable and a detriment to their learning and socialization. Members of the Board of Education, I strongly urge you to support the Mill Hill renovation and to advocate on our behalf, and I thank you for allowing me to share my personal experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward and talk on a business topic? I see nobody coming forward, so we'll... Oh, I'm sorry. Kind of thought you were walking one way and you turned a corner. Please, state your name and address.
Hi, Eric Sunman, RTM District 10, 51 French Street. I just wanted to, I have to actually leave soon because a babysitter has to leave, so if this is live, I'll watch it a little bit later on. But I'm excited that Mill Hill is finally getting a chance for renovation opportunity, and I have a second grader that currently goes there, really enjoys it. And I've, for the last three years, you know, have been really closely watching the school and seeing some of the needs that are necessary, the air quality, some questionable water quality issues, space, and the portables. And being on the RTM for the last 10 years, I have heard so many people over the years ask, when are some of these issues going to finally be addressed? And so, it's really good that we're here now, and I just wanted to thank you for that. And I know it's going to be difficult trying to make a decision for the final design, but there are a lot of variables unknowns need to be taken into consideration, especially the 803G situations that are occurring, and I guess it's hard to predict the final capacity that you need for the school. But ultimately, it definitely needs renovation at the bare minimum. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward and talk on a business item on our agenda? Please state your name and address.
My name is Shannon Messina. My address is 285 Woodrow Avenue. I have a son who's in third grade at Mill Hill School, and I have a daughter who will be in first grade. She's currently attending a Montessori school in town. And I'd just like to mention that when my son was in his first grade year, the air quality was so bad in his classroom that his teacher, who was pregnant, had to miss several days of school because she could not function in the classroom that he was in. I'd also like to mention that, you know, it's not safe for the kids to be walking in and out in these portables. They're old, you know? My son will be in fifth grade. That's their whole fifth-grade class will be in portables because there's no room in the building for these kids to have classroom space. So I think it's really important that we renovate the school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to come forward to talk on a business item on our agenda? Okay, then we will go on to old business, approval of the Sherman Educational Specifications. I'll place the motion on the table that the Board of Education approve the Sherman Educational Specifications dated February 8, or is this the current date for that one, right? Sherman.
Yeah, you would want to amend that to be today's date.
Dated February 13, 2018, so that eight will become a 13. With that motion on the table, do I have somebody moved it? Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Mrs. Vitale. Motion's in front of us. Any questions or comments that people wish to make on the educational specifications regarding Sherman School? Mrs. Cannelli.
Only one question, and I don't know if we could have expected to know this by now, but do we know yet for this what the Building Committee decision was, whether one's being formed or we're using the special projects? I don't know if we expected to know that by now, but...
I did have a chance to talk to our first selectman late this afternoon, and he informed me that it's his intention to create a separate building committee for this project. So the special projects has other things they're doing, or whatever went into his thinking doesn't matter, he's going to create a separate building committee based on this afternoon's conversation.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments regarding the Sherman project? None, okay? This is a voting item, so we go to the public for any comment that members of the public wish to make, unless you've already come forward to talk on Sherman. So anybody who wants to come forward to talk on the Sherman project, you're welcome.
Hello, good evening, everyone. I'm Eileen Roxby, the principal at Roger Sherman, and I've been there for 13 years and been waiting for this project to finally be finished. So I do appreciate your action on this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wish to come forward and talk about the Sherman EdSpecs? If not, back to the Board. I only remind the Board that the educational specifications that are there, and that's what we hope to accomplish and plan on accomplishing, but FEMA has jurisdiction on the total amount of money that we can spend before we drop off the face of the earth. And so the Board will have to work closely with the Building Committee to see if there are any issues that come up that might cause us to have to revisit the EdSpecs because of some budget issue or bid issue or whatnot. We're hoping that that does not happen, but I wouldn't want the Board not to realize that that's an important data point, if you will, that we stay underneath the FEMA budget number. And I think you have a memo there that describes how the calculations were made and whatnot, so just so that the Board is aware. If there are any no other further conversation or comments from the Board, then the motion in front of us, that the Board of Education approve the Sherman Educational Specifications dated February 13, 2018. All in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous with eight people here. Thank you very much. Onto Mill Hill, the recommended motion, again, changing the date eight to 13, that the Board of Education approve the Mill Hill Educational Specifications dated February 13, 2018. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Maxon Cannelli, seconded by Mrs. Jacobson. The motion's in front of us. Any comments from people who wish to make a comment? Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah, I am interested in making an amendment to these EdSpecs, but before I go ahead with that, I just want to try to get a sense of the body to see, because I know we are trying to stay within certain time parameters. So if this is something that the majority of the Board has no interest in pursuing, then I would simply not put forward my amendment, but...
So perhaps before you put forward the amendment, you at least describe what the topic is.
I would just like to say that all it is, is simply changing in two spots in the EdSpecs on Page Two, where it says, "The capacity, functional capacity of 378," I believe it is, "with portables." And I would like to have that read, "functional capacity of 483 students with relocatable classrooms and 378 without." So it's on Page Two. It's the first paragraph under capacity. The sentence I would like to read, "Presently, Mill Hill School has a functional capacity of 483 students with relocatable classrooms and 378 without relocatable classrooms." So it's simply changing the 378 to 483 and the 336 to 378. So that was the first part.
The 336 is where?
Page Two. Page Two?
Third line, yeah. It's in purple.
Here, I got it. And that number goes to? So that there might be clarity on the 483 number? How did you arrive at that? And I wonder if our consultant could also comment on the 483 number.
Right, okay. Well, I think it's important, I mean, it's really a technicality in some ways, but I do think it's important to note that this site does have, at this point, the capacity to have 483 students based on the fact that the core building has a capacity of 378, which is 18 general ed classrooms, times the average of 21, which is that 504 methodology that we use in these EdSpecs.
And that's what creates the 378.
That's what creates the 378. Then we have five portables. The five portables each have an average of 21. Five times 21 is 105. 105 plus 378 is 483. And I would just point to the fact that, so that's 483, plus that is also saying 23 sections, 23 general ed classrooms. And I would just point at the fact that while this year at Mill Hill, there are 18 sections, every year from 2009 until last year, there were anywhere from 19 to 24 sections. So in that way, I feel that it's important to note that we do have the capability to have a higher capacity, and while I completely understand that that is not within the EdSpec, what I would say is that the EdSpec is what we are aiming for. That's our goal with the proposed renovation and expansion of Mill Hill, is to reach that EdSpec and provide all those services in all those places. But as Mrs. Maxon Cannelli mentioned last week in our meeting and hinted to it today, is the fact that if we had to, we would have the general education classrooms used as general education classrooms before they were split into other pieces to use for special services, before the expansion and renovation. So that's my rationale. And just to add on to that, the other place that I would want to do that, that would just kind of make it complete, is on Page Seven in the chart, where it says, "Functional capacity with portables." In 2018, 19, 1920, and 2021, I would have it read 483 instead of 378. And in functional capacity without portables for those same years, it would read 378 instead of 336. So it's basically making the same changes in two different places, on Page Two, in the paragraph, on Page Seven, in the chart.
So we've been asked whether this is a subject that we want to spend some time on and vote on an amendment, is what Mrs. Gerber is asking. I'll only make one comment, is that for the casual reader, which sometimes there are a lot of RTM members who are, if they read a, you can currently accommodate 483 students, will they not get into the details and just say, "You got yourself covered?" So what is the Board's pleasure as to, because the capacity of a building is an important subject, so what is the Board's pleasure as to entertaining a formal motion on this? Anybody have a comment? Mrs. Vitale.
I support this amendment. I think that we should discuss it.
Okay, stop there. Other Board members? Two? Two, four? Okay, so let's get an official motion on the table.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I apologize for the handwriting. I had forgotten that there was another change made. I made this original amendment before we had the second copy of these EdSpecs. So it's both. It's the two. So I'd like to make a motion to amend the Mill Hill EdSpecs as follows, and I do the handwritten part first, to change the second sentence in the first paragraph on Page Two under capacity to read, "Presently, Mill Hill School has a functional capacity of 483 students with relocatable classrooms and 378 without relocatable classrooms." And to change the numbers in the chart on Page Seven for functional capacity with portables in 2018, 19, 1920, and 2021, to read 483 instead of 378. And to change the numbers on the same chart for functional capacity without portables in 2018, 19, 1920, and 2021, to read 378 instead of 336.
So before you just finish and we get an official second, I think the discussion was, but that only works if the specialized instruction classes aren't prioritized. Is that your understanding or not?
Well, simply because the fact that we obviously need to provide a desk, a chair, and a classroom for every one of our students. I'm not saying I'm in favor of Mill Hill where it was when it had 480 students back in 2009, when students were getting services on the stage in the APR and the computer lab was wherever, I don't even know where it was then. But all I'm saying is that with 483 students, Mill Hill was able to have all their students in classrooms. Yes, the services were in inappropriate spaces, which is the point of our EdSpecs and the point of this project moving forward, is to make sure that that does not happen.
Yep, fine, fine. Is there a second? Do you want to make any further comments? It's your motion.
Well, I think it kind of speaks for itself. I just think, in my view, it's very important to have these numbers in here because I'm just concerned that people and the other town bodies who follow these things, who are used to how we viewed capacity, and I understand the differences, I understand the thought of, well, this isn't, you know, part of, within the EdSpecs, but again, like I said before, our goal is to, with this project, to get this school within the EdSpecs by adding the spaces that it needs. Right now, this is the here and the now. This is what the capacity is of this building. Eventually, it won't be because these portables need to go. They're very old and they're in horrible shape. But we have to recognize the fact that there are three classes of students in three of those portables. So I just think it's important to have that. We are still asking for the same things in the EdSpecs and in the project. I think the only debate is whether or not we'll have the 24 general ed classrooms or less, which we agreed we can discuss later. I just think it's important to, for the here and now, say, while far from ideal, these numbers would work with this building at this time, our goal, again, is to get it to a point where it will not be an issue and where all of the services and all of the students and classrooms will be in appropriate spaces.
Mrs. Vitale, you seconded it. Do you have any comments further that you'd like to make?
I agree with Mrs. Gerber for all the points that she made. I think it's also important to recognize that while there are three classrooms in the portables, those classrooms could come into the bricks and mortar building if the space was used differently. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, there's a computer room that's in the bricks and mortar, there's a resource room that's in the bricks and mortar, and math, science, and technology is in the bricks and mortar. Those are three full-size classrooms that fifth grade, you know, if we wanted to, could be brought back into the building. I absolutely support this project, 100%, and my concern is that for years, we've heard people talk about this project, that we've been looking at it for 10 years, when it's been discussed in the past, the 378 has been out there, the 483 has been out there, and my fear is that if we put new numbers out there, as it's going before other town bodies, it's going to be a red flag and it's going to be a discussion point that it really doesn't need to be. The goal here is to move this forward. I think anyone who's been paying attention appreciates the need for the space and the fact that Mill Hill is lacking vital specialized spaces to educate all of our students. A question that I would have that I found valuable, the page in the Long-Term Facilities Plan that outlines exactly what spaces need to be added. I think that's very valuable, and I would even suggest, if you can add it to the EdSpec, making sure that that page alone goes with the EdSpecs to other town bodies, because I think it really clarifies what exactly is needed.
Let's stay on this particular motion, and Mr. Cullen might be able to explain how the EdSpec and the list of deficiencies in the facility plan, how that gets communicated to the Building Committee when we get to that point on the agenda. Anybody else wish to make a comment? Mr. Peterson, followed by Ms....
I'm just going to be very brief here. The amendment appeals to my sense of rigor, and I think that any possibility of misunderstanding on the part of other town bodies can be remedied by members of the Board advocating and educating on the rationale behind it.
Mrs. Maxon Cannelli.
Perfect segue to my point, which is, I'm entirely sympathetic to Mr. Dwyer's point about, we need to be very clear with colorful language and exceptional imagery, recalling memories of Holland Hill, which many of our other town bodies have gone to visit. But again, I'm in favor of the amendment, but I repeat, entirely sympathetic to Mr. Dwyer's point of... Dwyer's point of, we need to make clear to the other town bodies. If those portables went away, which is a district-wide goal, and all those children came in, they would in fact assume the positions in those general ed classrooms, which would put art on a cart, perhaps, which would put things in hallways that don't belong on the stage, et cetera, and that completely agree with the amendment, but we need to be very clear about communicating those other deficiencies. And that while they're not in evidence right now because of the portables, don't let that color affect. Those need to go away, for every reason that we've heard from members of the public, for reasons that we've said here. The portables need to go, and that were that to happen like that, here's the imagery of what that would then happen. So, again, agreeing with Mr. Dwyer's point, but it's, we would not put art in a cart, you know, excuse me, we would put art in a cart before we put fifth grade on a cart. We would put, you know, a band on the stage before we put first grade on the stage. We just won't do that. And that was, to my point to Mr. Gallagher, regarding the reality of the situation. We would not do that. So, we need these numbers to represent what we would do, which is, the first focus is on the general ed classrooms and having those used. But again, we really do need to beat that drum regarding what would happen otherwise.
So, to those members of the public who aren't familiar with our process, this is an amendment, so anybody in the audience, when I come to public comment on this as a voting item, may come forward and talk about the amendment. Mrs. Jacobson?
Just for clarification, is there any reason why in the ed spec, we only use the functional capacity numbers in this ed spec? And is there any benefit, or would there be any benefit, to listing both the functional and the operational inside this ed spec?
Mr. Cullen, I don't know whether you heard that question.
In that paragraph.
But, there are, I'll only say this, there are various, MGT happened to break things into functional, operational, and theoretical.
My point is just, it seems, it's a big issue, and maybe just for clarification, sorry, yeah.
M&amp;M also has descriptors of different types of capacity. I'd have to ask Mr. Cullen if there's a rationale as to why we have, I'll say, more often than not quoted functional capacity as the measure.
I think, for the record, Tom Cullen, Executive Director of Operations. I think long ago, when we first started capacity deficiency with MGT of America, which is 2010 or even before that, we were strictly looking at the functional capacity of the bricks and mortar, based on the fact that we really didn't have good, strong educational specifications for an elementary school. And as we worked through the years, and even with Malone McBroom, just recently, we've now have good educational specs from Stratfield, Riverfield, and even now Holland Hill, so we're able to do operational capacity studies, which look at what the operation of the school district is for an elementary school. So, that's why the two were different. I think years ago, we only had the bricks and mortar and the functionality. I can remember MGT even asking me, telling me, "I don't need to know what the name of the room is. Don't tell me what, you know, don't put names in all the rooms, we're just going to count the general classrooms." Whereas today, now with Malone McBroom, we need to know, where's the CLC, where's the special ed, OTPT, computer is in the library, or is it its own room? So, it's more specific.
So, can I suggest that you give thought to this conversation, and once we handle this amendment, if you want to bring forward something, bring it forward, okay? Any other comments on the amendment that is in front of us? Any other board member, before I get back to Mrs. Gerber?
I just want to follow up on Mrs.
Yeah, any other board member want to make a comment on this amendment? Ms. Leeper, and then I'll go back to Mrs. Gerber.
If Ms. Gerber wants to follow up on-
Then, Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah, just, I'm not sure if this would suffice, but you know, on page seven, right under the chart, it does say operational capacity without portables. So, that is listed right there on page seven, under the chart.
It is. I was just curious if it was, why it wasn't in the paragraph with the functional together.
I just think, I guess my thought would be, that it might be a little too cumbersome, having it in the paragraph, whereas if we are going with the functional in the chart, and you have the functional in the paragraph, that having the operational listed just underneath the chart would suffice, but that's just my personal opinion.
Ms. Leeper?
Not to beat a dead horse, I also support this motion, but I think historically, we've always defined capacity by number of general education classrooms. So, to change that, I think would, I would be worried that in front of other town bodies might look misleading, to have changed the way we're defining our capacity. But, these very clear and specific ed specs define all of the additional spaces, because like, whether or not we want a 504, for example, still doesn't actually talk about all of these small and more defined spaces that we want. It still is just a measure of general ed classrooms, which is not the picture of the schools that we're building now. So, I think the consistency might help while advocating in front of other town bodies.
If there are no other comments on the amendment that is in front of us, let me go to the public, for anybody that wishes to comment on the amendment, and the amendment only, which is not changing the ed specs, it's clarifying how we define capacity. I mean, it's technically a change, but it's not changing the actual what we want to accomplish. Please come forward and state your name and address.
Molly Horahan, 645 Warner Hill Road in Southport. While I understand that it sounds like there's support for this amendment, just to underscore that, using the capacity number of 378, in my opinion, it undersells the standard of excellence that one would come to expect from Fairfield schools, of equal access to education for all students. So, if we are going to use a standard that is familiar to town bodies, because it was used in the past, as counting general ed classrooms before special needs and other needs, then we are moving backwards. If you're going to move forward with new ed specs, that try to give Mill Hill and other schools the same standards that, of excellent education, that schools are being built to today, then the 273 makes more sense, because it prioritizes the needs of all students, and it's basically a judgment on who you're going to sell short.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to come forward? Please state your name and address.
Kelly Jacobson, Acorn Lane in Southport. Just so you know, at Mill Hill, there was reference to a classroom that supports language learning and math, and is part of the scenario of bringing kids back into the school. This classroom was actually taken out of an instructional classroom. A previous parent had referenced the fact that a teacher became very sick using this classroom. So, basically, there were so many problems and complaints about issues related to health, as it related to this particular room, that this room is no longer used for instructional purposes, and instead, the specialists were put into that room. So, while I respect maybe a desire to have the numbers work well for the town bodies, I think we have to just be careful, we're dealing with a lot of different evils in that school, and it's almost like we're having to choose between an indoor classroom and a portable, which both have very poor air quality, based on some of the learnings that we've been getting over the year. So, just to be clear, this classroom, this room, is no longer an instructional classroom this year, because of so many complaints and health concerns about it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward from the public to talk about this amendment, and the amendment only? Seeing none, back to the board. Any comments from the board? Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, I just want to clarify that changing these numbers is not going to change the way this plan moves forward, and that based on what the enrollment is now, and what it looks like it's going to be for the short-term future, we are not saying that we're going to take the portables away and put all the students in the building before the building is done. We're talking about it more in theoretical hypothetical terms, that it could be done, and that's why that number is more important. But it's a number on a piece of paper, whereas the intention is to get this project moving as quickly as possible. My concern is that if there is confusion, if there, if people are not understanding where these numbers came from, and how one number can go down by almost 100, that it will slow things down, it will muddy the waters, it could slow up the process, and then slow down the entire project. So, my only reason for doing this, really and truly, is to make sure this project stays on track, so that as soon as possible, the portables can go away, because the full building will be renovated, and students can be going into the proper spaces, all students. So, that's my intention. I'm not trying to prioritize somebody over someone else, one group over another. I'm simply saying that, on paper, the numbers are such that I believe the ones I made the amendment for better represent it. But I am not trying to choose one group over another, and I'm not saying that we will have to move everyone into the school before the school is done.
My guess is that we are all interested in having a set of ed specs that put the board in the best possible position to advocate for this project as it goes through the other town bodies. And it's probably a coin toss, at least in my mind, it's a coin toss, as to whether telling people, "It's 273, I don't care what you've heard before, it's 273," because we want to not have art in a cart, we'd want to not have music on a stage. There's enough Irish in me that I would say, "No, I'm putting the art teacher in the classroom, the English teacher has to teach on the stage."
Happens.
But this is not a hill I'm going to die on. I think these are accurate numbers, and it's clear, the board thinks that we will be in a better position to sell the project with numbers that the town bodies are familiar with, and then explain to those who might have questions. So, I'll vote for it, but I think there's a, you can look at it from both sides, I think. Any other final comments that board members wish to make? Mrs. Vitale?
I agree with you. I think that both numbers, and both ways of looking at it, are valuable. And by seconding this amendment, it was really, it is totally unacceptable for any student to be in a portable, totally unacceptable for services to be on a stage, in a hallway, in a closet. The mere fact that we are putting this forward is that this board thinks that it is totally unacceptable, and we, after years of waiting, want to make it happen. And we were already delayed on the town side. We've been told that we're up against a very tight timeline to make this a reality, so, you know, it has nothing to do with putting one set of students in front of the other. It has to do with putting the needs of all students first, and that's why I'm supporting this amendment.
Thank you. So, the motion would be on the amendment, it's been passed around to everybody, does anybody need it to be restated? Everybody understands the motion that is in front of us? Okay. So, therefore, I won't reread the whole thing, it's right in writing in front of you. All those in favor of the amendment as put forth by Mrs. Gerber, please raise your hand. Sorry. Eight to zero, it's unanimous, thank you very much. Now, back to the motion, the main motion, with the ed specs as amended, as written here. Any further conversation on the ed specs that are in front of us? Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli?
I just want to reiterate the point that I believe it was Mr. Asis said at the last meeting, between him and Mrs. Gerber, leading much of that discussion, and saying this publicly, we all recognize this, but it's vital that the other boards know this, that the members of the public know this, that we are, right now, barring any other amendments, we are voting this in as a 504 school, but that we're absolutely going to be continuing that discussion. We're not going to have the project held up because these ed specs, because the very important conversation that we need to have, we're not trying to rush that into one meeting. And that this is always something that could come back up to adjust that, if that's the decision of the board after all of our discussion. So, that this 504 is not the final statement about this. You know, we clarified that last Thursday, but I just think that bears repeating.
Before I go to the public, several board members sent in questions, and the superintendent and her staff tried diligently to do the research, to get the factual information in front of you. It was at your place setting today. For those of you who may say, "Oh, that was my question," please, while I go to the public, listen to the public, but you might want to at least glance at that, to see if that responded to your question. And if not, when we come back from the public, I'll entertain comments on any information in here. Mrs. Pitko?
My question is, just simply, did we provide a copy of this to the public, or will it be published on the website, our questions?
Is any of it on the back table? No, it'll be posted on the website. So, the main motion that is in front of us, is that the Board of Education approved the Mill Hill Educational Specifications dated February 13, 2018, as amended, right? Members of the public, would you like to come forward and talk on the Mill Hill Project, provided you've not already talked on the main motion? On the amendment, that's fine, but didn't talk in the beginning of the meeting?
No. It's my scripted version versus my unscripted version before. Kelly Jacobson, Fairfield resident. I've been a Mill Hill parent for the past seven years, and have a preschooler who's still, sorry, has yet to start the school. For the past four years, I've also chaired the Mill Hill School of Excellence Committee, part of a national PTA program that supports and celebrates partnerships between PTAs and schools to enrich the educational experience and overall well-being of all students. Our committee is currently in the process of reapplying for School of Excellence status for 2018 to 2020, and we have collectively chosen as our key focus area to ensure the health and safety of our children. I believe that the renovation of Mill Hill is vital to ensure the health and safety of our children and staff. One needs to simply examine some recent projects, and explore other incidents at our school to highlight some of the issues Mill Hill faces. Last summer, an asbestos abatement project was undertaken when asbestos was found in the office of one of our staff members. In spring of 2016, a temporary fence was put up to provide greater safety to our fifth graders housed in aging portables which have no bathroom facilities. In the 2014 to 2015 timeframe, Mill Hill received new air conditioning and had some ventilation work done in our main and admin office area because of air quality concerns. And in 2013 and 2015, our PTA schools for, PTA Tools for Schools representative measured carbon dioxide levels in multiple areas of Mill Hill exceeding acceptable range of 1,000 parts per million. Levels of carbon dioxide in a room can be used as an indicator for determining if proper heating, ventilation, and air conditioning exists in an area. And in the past month, water running from a kitchen faucet was measured to have a higher-than-acceptable level of lead. Attempts to mitigate some of these problems serve as only Band-Aids to larger issues that will continue to manifest themselves over time, because of our aging facilities, dated systems, and cramped quarters, and potentially in more significant ways. According to the EPA, quote, "Good indoor air quality contributes to a favorable environment for students, performance of teachers and staff, and a sense of comfort, health, and well-being. These elements combine to assist in school in its core mission, educating children," end quote. The ask and need here are very basic. The ask, "Please delay no further in approving the steps necessary to move Mill Hill renovations forward." And the need, "So that our students and staff are afforded a learning environment where there's no question whether or not indoor air quality is compromising the school's core mission of educating our children." And I think with this new amendment, and I really appreciate that this has been fast-tracked in terms of developing the ed specs, and getting to the Board of Selecting exactly what they ask for, but I really hope that, I get the sense that you're completely on our side on this, but we need all the help that we can get, and so, and so I worry a little bit about changes that kind of might change the dialogue, and put it towards a direction that might give us a bigger hurdle than we really need at this point. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward to talk about the Mill Hill ed specs, before we go to vote? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Hi, Janine Ali in 10472 Mill Hill Drive. I do support this project, and I know you're going to put forward 504, but maybe make it more clear to other people that there are some wetlands at the bottom of that area, there's other things on that land, and I just want to make it known that there's flexibility if the plan- if the plan, the project goes over budget and becomes a very big concern, just to have more awareness, the surrounding areas. If you're going to have to drain things, you're going to go into some wetlands. Those are things that I just don't know are concerns, and people who try to make projects for businesses jump through hurdles to get things approved. So you should kind of treat this project with a similar idea. But I do support that the portals have to go, the fence, the air, things to be improved. But maybe with the size, focus on how, you know, far the project's going to go on land, that's really not a perfect flat, you know, it's a great idea, but it's maybe not the best kind of property to provide 504. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wish to come forward to talk about the Mill Hill ed specs motion? Seeing none, back to the board. Any final comments? Let me first ask, is there anybody, we are putting this forward as a 504 school, which is the design that we have aimed at. Is there anybody on the board that wants to say, question that or talk about that? Seeing, go ahead.
I don't know that I'm prepared to debate it now, but I don't want to close the issue at this meeting.
Yeah, no, I think was stated earlier that as the facility considerations are done, between our meeting date and the date that a building committee actually has its first meeting, there's going to be enough time for us to be able to address and get a revision back if the board is of a mind to. Mrs. Gerber?
Well, I guess to that point, I guess one thing that would really be helpful, and I know that a couple of years ago, we did get a breakdown as to what a 441 Mill Hill would cost versus a 504. You know, I think it might be helpful at some point to have a breakdown showing what each, you know, what does, I mean, because basically what we're talking about is just reducing how, the number of general ed classrooms. I mean, in terms of the 504 plan, we're still going to be providing all those smaller spaces that are lacking in the school now that we need to have, you know, for OTPT and gifted and math, science, and all of that. But the only debate seems to be, or could be, whether or not we want to have 24 general ed classrooms. So one of the things might be helpful, in addition to looking at the enrollment numbers, is also to see how much money would we save by cutting out one, two, or three general ed classrooms. Because my view would be, if it's not going to be an incredibly large amount of money, it might be a good idea to err on the more, on the bigger side, simply to provide more room down the road. If however, it's going to create savings and we feel that from an enrollment perspective it doesn't make sense, I would certainly be happy to listen to that as well. Because again, what we're talking about is making sure all those additional facilities and the bump out and the line and the cafeteria and all of those other things that have been lacking there for so long are going to be taken care of whether it is a 483, a 462, a 441, or a 504. So, but it might be helpful to understand how much does a general ed classroom cost.
And so I think as we continue the facility discussions, I think we can put that specific question on that, on that, on the table. Any other board members wish to make a final comment? Mr. Peterson?
I'm worried I'm going to muddy the waters here a little bit. I kind of wanted to get back to something that Mrs. Vitale said about the portables. And this is going to come out all wrong, but she mentioned in several occasions that they're totally unacceptable. And while I'm sympathetic to the, I think what the emotion of that is, I don't want to leave the public with the perception that they're inherently unsafe, that Mill Hill is probably making the best use of the resources it has available and that probably in the most charitable analysis, the portables are suboptimal, but it's not as though we are in an emergency situation with them unless I understand things poorly.
I don't believe district staff would keep a facility being used if they felt it was totally unsafe, but that is always a judgment that different people can honestly talk about.
No, and I understand that. Again, I just wanted to make sure that we're not leaving the public with the impression that these are inherently unsafe facilities.
Mrs. Vitale?
Guilty of being a little overdramatic, but I'm just really, I think it's just the passion of that this board and past boards have been committed to just getting students out of portables.
And speaking of somebody-
And that's really the only sentiment it is.
I had, I had a daughter who went through two years in a portable, and I, I'm entirely with you on that. I think that as a, as a board goal, I am firmly behind that.
Any other final comments before we vote? Anybody but, nobody, no other final comments? Okay, the motion in front of us is that the Board of Education approve the Mill Hill educational specifications dated February 13th, 2018, as amended. All in favor, please raise your hand. It is eight to zero. Thank you very much. So we are off and running. Now, your penalty for coming for this vote is that you have to stay for the rest of the meeting. Or you can quietly leave while we go about our business. Thank you very much for coming. Item 6C, approval of amendment to policy 9,000 bylaws. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the bylaw amendment to bylaws of the board, Article 2, Section 4, committees as enclosed, and that's enclosed on Exhibit 1. Ms. Leeper, are you putting the motion forward? No, I don't know. It was my understanding that since, since Nick is not, since Nick is not here, I presume you are putting the motion forward.
Yes.
A move, is there a second? Mrs. Gerber? Do you wish to make any comments about the amendment?
Just quickly, I want to again apologize for missing the last meeting and thank the board for really productive and fruitful discussion on the first read of this bylaw amendment. I think that a lot of really valid points were made, and so we've made, as you have noticed and as reflected here, some significant changes that I think, and I hope, will clear up the purpose and intent of this subcommittee and happy to answer any other questions, obviously.
Mrs. Gerber, as the secretary, do you wish to make any comment? Board members have comments that they wish to make. Mrs. Maxon, Connolly?
Just a note to thank Mr. Asa and Abstention, Ms. Leeper for both for getting back to me. I raised a number of concerns. My only remaining concern, which doesn't come with a language amendment, is only that, the caution for this not to become a burden on staff, that this is meant to be something that works cooperatively with staff, that it's a, it's a brain trust, it's a place, a safe place to run ideas past, get board feedback, guidance for thumbs up, thumbs down, or let's discuss this further. So that was a concern of mine, is that if this is just going to become a drain on the staff, quite honestly. So that's just a caution. Again, thank you for the communication, my caution. The final point, which I thought Mr. Dwyer raised when this came up last time, was regarding the crossover that this could potentially have with policy. And I don't have a suggestion for that, only a recognition that I think that's a very fair point, that if something comes up in finance which has policy implications, I mean, I can readily see the policy committee referring something to finance to say, we'd like you to, you know, mull this over. But what finance does and how those two will work together, I can only say is something that will be worked out. And if ultimately, bylaw amendment language needs to be altered to reflect what would make that a better working relationship, if we suddenly snapped our fingers and imagined nine new board members and they're needing to rely on this bylaw for guidance, is what I'm thinking. But I think, I couldn't imagine, I couldn't come up with wording, so it's just going to be one of those, for me, let's find out where the bumps are and then work to smooth those out.
Other comments from board members on the proposed amendment? Seeing none, a question, you crossed out number two in its original form. I'm not quite understanding how two, which talks about new finance and budget-related ideas, differs in any substantive way from discuss the finances of the district and the annual budget. What do you see the differentiation between those two points?
So I picture the annual budget as pretty limited within scope as, as an item that this committee would look at, and that two is much more forward-looking and big picture. So if specific topics have been raised, for example, pay-to-play, that's a big topic for this board to tackle in regular board meetings, but it's something that the subcommittee could work on and see what, you know, are all the details of what that would look like. Or corporate sponsorships and big, big sort of ticket items like that. And those are more what I envisioned sort of being captured by this new number two. That isn't nitpicking at the, at the budget.
Yeah. And I'd like to clarify, the staff do a lot of work to get the 175-page budget document to us at the beginning of January. This is not contemplating, I'm stating it in the negative, this is not contemplating that that budget document first goes to the finance committee before it comes to the full board. That's not what this is contemplating. Or is it?
This doesn't make that mandatory. I think if there were spec-
Oh, I'm asking if that's the expectation of those who are proposing the amendment?
The 175-page budget book, no, definitely not. I think there's specific items that maybe a superintendent might want to run by us before bringing it to the full board, class size, just as an example, maybe that would be something that'd be helpful to have as a discussion in a smaller group first before bringing it to the full board table. And that is more something I think we envision this committee being for, from hopefully the useful side for the, for central office and superintendent.
I'd like to comment on Mrs. Maxon Connolly's. Occasionally, for instance, our town charter suggests that the Board of Selectmen talks about the budget, but it's the Board of Finance that sends the budget to the RTM, not the Board of Selectmen. I am presuming by your comment that the Board of Finance, that the finance committee may have an opinion, but that doesn't trump the policy committee's opinion. And if the policy committee brings something forward, you might, that committee might have an opinion on it, but it's not like they have to go through the finance committee in order to move something forward. Quite independent, correct?
Absolutely. And I thought your point was, your question at the last meeting was an excellent one, and I raised it to Mrs. Maxon Connolly, about how if there are issues like that, how, if she had any suggestions, and my only suggestion was, if there's really a rub there, I think it must, it probably would be an issue best to just to bring to the full board table.
Yeah. In the main, I am nervous about this, as Mrs. Leeper knows. We can call it a finance committee, but this is a management committee. We are not a management board. We are a policy board. And anything that causes, not this board, this board is different, but four years from now, eight years from now, this committee will still exist because it will never be eliminated without six votes. That's a high threshold. And at least my experience is over time, volunteers find it easier to muck around in management stuff, that's a technical term, muck around in management stuff and not focus on policy. So if this committee truly is saying, we're really focused on the pluses and minuses of pay-to-play, we're really focused on those, I'll say, larger issues, it's good use of the committee. If the committee starts asking our Director of Finance to show them monthly finance reports by minor account, so they can pore over what essentially is encumbered costs that represent about 90% of our budget. There's very, once we pass a budget, there's very little margin. It's really a CEO's job, the superintendent's job, to manage the budget, bring it to a bottom line with all the little decisions that have to be made along that line. And my only, my big concern is that four years from now, six years from now, eight years from now, different people are on the board and suddenly they revert to the, I'm here to manage the district, not to lead the district by policy. So I'll not be voting for it, not because I don't think good things can't come from it, but more because I honestly believe that the role and responsibility of this board is policy, not management, and that this might drag the board into management, which I firmly believe are in the hands of a capable superintendent and their staff. Notwithstanding that, I have no doubt based on the comments that this will become a bylaw, but I didn't want it to not at least be able to express my viewpoint. Any final comments from the board before I give Ms. Leeper the floor for the final comment? Ms. Leeper?
I completely respect your thoughts on this topic, and I agree, it's not our intent in any way to hinder the functioning of central office. And the intent is to not be a management committee, but to provide a forum. And maybe we didn't get the best language in here to make that clear, that we're not trying to micromanage and nitpick at the operating budget, but rather, kind of like policy, see what is the financial implication of taking on this specific policy, for example, pay-to-play, or whatever it may be, and just having extra time in a workspace to do that legwork. But I also am sensitive to your point that we won't be the board forever, and, and I, I understand that, and I hope, you know, we can trust that we'll go on to have a chair who will appoint responsible board members to these committees.
Thank you. Any other final comment? Ms. Pitco?
Listening to both of you and reading through this, and while I understand the intent, I think you're missing the language that he's addressing and that you're agreeing with. So I'm reading through this and I can see his concern now, the way it's written this way. Does that make sense? So my suggestion might be to revisit the language. I don't have a specific amendment, I honestly would have, I mean, I've sat in policy with Mrs. Maxon Connolly, and we take tons of time to go through this word for word. So right now, no, but understanding the point of what, as a board, we do, I get that it's not reading clearly and that, he's right, in the future, when we're not all on the board, what this could become.
When, you mean like, when four members are on this board that maybe have been on the board in the past? Mrs. Maxon Connolly, followed by Mrs. Gerber?
The one bit of language that I've been hanging on to very desperately for, for exactly Mr. Dwyer's concern, and so maybe this is where there's room for an amendment, is the fact that the statement of the purpose of the committee shall be to provide a forum for, that puts the direction of who's generating the ideas and who's generating the work of the committee is coming from staff. It's not being self-generated by the committee members, and that's what I've been hoping for. But then also, this is actually my first time realizing that number two does not exactly mimic number one, which is to provide a forum for the superintendent, the superintendent's staff, it adds and the committee. And maybe that needs to be stricken to reinforce or to strengthen the notion that the ideas or the usefulness of this is being driven by staff. I'm just throwing that out there as, as an idea, because I, like Ms. Pitco, I agree with Mr. Dwyer, that having seen, seen how boards can work and how board members can conduct themselves, this is a very real concern. It is not my concern with the nine who are here, or who are the three or who are going to volunteer for this, but it's real. And I don't know, that's one thought, but that's, it was always that phrasing, which is what I've been holding on to as this would restrict exactly that kind of behavior, but that's my interpretation.
If we don't have language allowing for the committee to initiate ideas, then I guess I don't actually know what the purpose of the committee would be, because it's to explore those longer-term, potentially cost-saving items. And if we don't want the committee to do that work, then that just falls back onto the full board, which is another alternative. It will, it's just that, it seems, we haven't found the time to work that into our agendas yet. And there's a lot of those topics that have been floating around without a separate work environment and time set aside and people were responsible for actually doing that And also that we, the previous language, and I know Mr. Asa pointed this out in the, in the first read, was just the exact copycat of what this used to be, because we did not want to recreate the wheel. And then after listening to the comments, number two seemed sort of useless in this, in this bylaw, because it's already happening. And actually, this committee played no role in, in that work. And I heard that sort of the rationale was actually not really reflected in, in the specific bylaw. So sort of what we did was just replace number two with really what the rationale for the committee was. So that was our intent in making, in making that change.
Can I just comment on that?
Well, Mrs. Gerber was next.
It's, so the policy com- It's, so the Policy Committee actually gets its direction through the Board. One of the things is, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly asks, is there any policies you'd like us to say? And then, the Policy Committee then looks at CAAB, Connecticut Association of Boards of Education's policies, all existing. So if you're asking, what is the purpose of this Committee, I initially, when I heard of the idea, thought it would be getting the direction from the entire Board of topics to look at. And then reading this, I kind of get that it's from the Superintendent and the staff.
Except point two does add "and" the Committee. I think that's an important clarification, because that, for me at least, clarifies the difference between one and two, but-
I think there's like a nuance in understanding that I'm now realizing where you guys are coming from. So I read number one as, if the Superintendent and the Superintendent's staff does not want to bring anything to this Committee, then they don't. They're not required to run anything by us if they don't find that beneficial. We're sort of like a separate, maybe, lower stakes setting to run new ideas by. That, to me, is what number one is. So if it's not beneficial for them to run something by this Committee, they are not obligated to do so. If they don't want to utilize this forum, they don't need to.
Okay, so, one of the other policy or bylaws, I'll wait, one of the other policies and bylaws that we have is Board members can't ask for information of the staff that isn't readily available, and if it's going to take too much staff time, that's not exactly the wording, but you get the point, then the Superintendent will come to the full Board to say, "Is this what you want me to spend staff time on?" I would presume that this Committee will operate underneath that policy, that if the two members of the Committee are not in a position to direct the Superintendent to do something, that the Superintendent feels is above and beyond their staff capacity to generate. And if they do, then they come to the full Board, speaking to Ms. Pitco's point, they have to come to the full Board to say, "Is this an area that you want staff to spend time on and explore?"
But to your point, that's not in the policy. So looking ahead, at a different nine members, that's not written anywhere there. The way it's written is that the Committee would come up with the idea and ask the staff. It doesn't-
Not here, but it's in a separate bylaw, and they have to comply with that bylaw. You know? If it became more onerous, 99 times out of 100, our prior Superintendent, as you can see from currently, our current Superintendent tries very hard with her staff to get information to us, as long as it's not overburdening them and keeping them from their normal and customary duties. And I suspect that that will continue, but if it were to get onerous for whatever reason in the future, there is a backstop, if you will, because of that other bylaw. Mrs. Vitale? Oh, I'm, no, I'm sorry. Mrs. Gerber, followed by Mrs. Vitale.
Yeah, well, I guess two things. First, I mean, part of the reason for bringing this back was the whole, and I hate to bring up this phrase again, the whole structural change discussion, but, I mean, that was one rationale to bringing this Committee back, and it was a Committee that did exist in the past, and I think did quite good work, and I believe, you know, Ms. Leeper and Mr. Asa did talk to former members of the Finance Committee to get a sense of what their responsibilities were. And, you know, I think it was a way to kind of streamline the process, much as policy does, in terms of doing some of the kind of, the smaller work to kind of bring bigger ideas to the Board, or, you know, in the case of policy, you know, a completed policy. So I, while I completely recognize the concerns about a different group of nine being, you know, a different situation, I do think that this could be helpful, you know, at this time. So I think I support it, I do support it. And also, I think too, because the language is the same as what it was, I don't, I understand the concerns, but I think that we should move forward with it.
Okay, so, final comments from the Board, and then I'll let Mrs. Leeper make the final comment. Mrs. Vitale, followed by Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
I was, I'm just looking at the future Board of Ed and Staff Budget discussions that came out of the ad hoc Committee, and some of the things on this list, in my mind, would go straight to this Committee if it was approved. Also, and just looking back over the budget process and all the questions that came from the Board to the staff, and the quick turnaround that the staff had to, you know, so quickly get us our answers, my hope would be that this Committee would alleviate some of that. So maybe some of those initial questions could be asked earlier in the process, so the staff wasn't rushing around. Just in terms of voicing this Board, I fully appreciate the concerns for what comes next, but I guess kind of a directive, I will be supporting it, and I thank you for putting it forward.
Mrs. Maxon Cannelly?
Sense of the Board, if I proposed an amendment that at the end of number two, where it says "to present to the full Board," and then, comma, "in accordance with Board policy and bylaws." So if I can propose-
So-
I just saw lots of heads nodding.
That's a friendly amendment? Does the maker of the motion approve the amendment? Is there unanimous, the motion belongs to the Board, so the proper way to say it is, is there unanimous consent to accept that as an amendment? Seeing nobody, then it's declared that, read the sentence again, so-
So, to read the end of the sentence, "and budget-related items prior to presenting to the full Board, comma, in accordance with Board policy and bylaws."
Everybody understand that as the friendly amendment, that when we pass this, it includes that, those extra words? So let me just ask one other question. Other than myself, is there anybody, more than two, who might have an issue with passing this tonight? Because if not, I would perhaps suggest, if there is, it might be polite to wait until Mr. Asar is back, because if there's three or more that may not be interested in doing this, suddenly the motion fails, but if he was here, it would pass. So, do you understand what I'm saying? I don't want to, all right? I see nobody? Okay, good, we'll move forward. This is a voting item, so, no, this is an operational issue of the Board, not a public comment, so it's final comments with Ms. Leeper. You don't need to make any, but it's your motion.
Just thank you for the honest feedback and discussion. I think all of your comments have been well received and very productive, so, thank you.
Thank you. With no further questions, the motion on the table is that the Board of Education approve the bylaw amendment, two bylaws of the Board, Article II, Section IV, Committees as enclosed and amended. All in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Pitco, Ms. Leeper, Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Jacobson, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, Mr. Peterson, all opposed, Mr. Dwyer. The motion passes seven to one. Thank you very much. We're now on to the policy, where am I here? Collective bargaining. The recommended motion is that the Fairfield Board of Education approve the collective bargaining agreement between Fairfield Custodian Maintenance, the United Public Service Employees Union, Local 1779, and Fairfield Public Schools for the period July 1, 2016 through June 30, 29, do I have, 2019, do I have a motion? Mrs. Jacobson, seconded by Mrs. Maxon Cannelly. Any conversation on this? Seeing none, we don't take public comment on personnel matters. All in favor of the motion that's in front of us, please raise your hand. It is unanimous, eight to zero. Thank you very much. So let's see, where was I? 10, 12, I'm going to say 950. So Item 7B, approval of the TMS Roof Replacement Project, that the Board of Education accept the TMS Roof Replacement Project 051-0145RR as complete. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Ms. Leeper. Any conversation? Mr. Cullen, do you have any comments that you wish to make to us regarding this project?
No, just a very successful project this past summer. Seven of the 16 roofs were replaced at Thomason Middle School. The budget was $875,000, nonrecurring. The actual numbers came in from the contractor, $749,832. Architect, $19,750, for a total of $769,582. So we came in under budget, well, we got a great contractor that we like and have done roofs for us before. Our reimbursement rate at that time is 25.71%. We should get back $197,859 from the state of Connecticut.
Thank you very much. For new Board members, what you will find, this is a public praise announcement that I'll be making, taking opportunity of. When a project is put forward by our staff and managed by our staff with vendors that we choose, more often than not, it comes in on time and on budget. When a larger project managed by a building committee of volunteers, those are the projects that, by initial estimation, and by frequently what is referred to as scope creep, they seem to get away from us. And somehow or other, we've got to find a way to solve the second problem, because it's been a vexing problem for this town for 20 years. Any comments or questions on the TMS, so thank you for managing this project. Any questions on the TMS Roof Replacement Project? Mr. Peterson?
Sorry, I'm going to ask a newbie question here, apologies. I'm very happy to see this came in, whatever, $90,000, under budget. This is a bonding issue. What happens to the balance of that?
The town will only bond what is approved and spent.
Frequently, a town will float tax and participation notes, TANs, to finance projects, and then when they have the known cost, then they take that known cost and bond it. I thought we kept the balance as always, but Tom says, no, we can't.
No, the short-term bonds, five, 10 years.
Anybody else have a question on the TMS Roof Replacement Project, out to the public? Any member of the public wish to comment on accepting the TMS Roof Replacement Project? Seeing none, back to the Board. If you're ready to vote, all in favor, please raise your hand. And it's eight to zero. Thank you very much, unanimous.
Thank you.
On to policies now. Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, you want to walk us through the first read?
Sure. So, do you want me to take them one at a time, Mr. Dwyer?
I think that would be helpful.
Okay. Well, actually, if I may, let me pair the first two, because it was utterly a paired process throughout. So these are distinguished as political activities of school employees. Second policy, political activities in the schools on school board property. And, so this, the impetus from this had been from some questions that had been raised in the public early in Dr. Jones's tenure. She, as, you know, as a leader of the District, went to the policy manual produced by the Board to get some guidance, which of course is one of the purposes of the policy manual, and found it lacking. There was no policy on, you'll notice on the, when we get to the third policy, it's customary that when we are changing language, black will be for what we have currently existing, and then we use a different color to indicate where we're making changes. I requested that this not be entirely in red or entirely in blue, but just to be in black. But, in fact, this is completely brand-new, we have no existing policy for this. And so again, the impetus for this had been to provide some guidance, and that was, then we were off to the races. This has been quite the process, and if she is listening, thanks to Mrs. Carnell for being part of a previous Board that helped with this, thanks to Mrs. Pitco for joining the Policy Committee when Mr. Calabrese left, so that we would have that additional input. We got multiple examples from CAAB and began piecing this together. At one point in time, it was far more prescriptive than what you have in front of you. And because we had one, that's one of the, the public comments certainly provided myself, and I plan to put this on the policy agenda for the end of February, to talk about some of the public comments we heard here and decide, does this cover some of the staff concerns? Or in fact, do we need to make some changes, which we would then notify the Board that we were planning to do? But, some of those comments regarding vague language represent very, very deliberate decisions by the Board to trust administration and staff to implement the intent of the policy. And we pulled back from some of the prescriptive language, because when you begin to try to define something like, for example, political activities, you should have seen the bullet point we had on that one. It got to the point where I couldn't even place the punctuation on that list. It was, it was pretty crazy, and we finally realized, no, we're going to use the phrase "political activities" as an example, pulled back from the overly prescriptive, because one, you cannot possibly anticipate every eventuality, and the idea was that this did have a goal, was to give some guidance. And again, just to be clear, this was beyond employees, this was other uses of the property as well. So that's just a little bit of the background. We are well aware that you'll be hearing opinions about this, and if that directs questions on your part, if you have questions now, I'm happy to entertain them and do the best I can with them, and anything I can't answer, bring back to policy and get you answers. So, you know, we don't know that we got this completely right. We're very, very open to feedback, and once it's put into place, if we discover that it had some unintended consequences, I think we would gladly take it up in policy again to get it right. So, with that as my introduction for these two, again, that's 1311.1, as well as Point Two, are there any immediate questions from the Board?
I would only ask you to indicate who else you ran this by for comment.
Sure. So that, because obviously, this does have ramifications for other groups, this isn't just one of those policies that we pass, and no one besides a principal actually knows that it impacts school or anyone else. I did run this past both, the Chair of the Republican Town Committee, as well as the Democratic Town Committee, so that, to make them aware, because obviously, for certain aspects of this, they would need to make their candidates and their elected officials aware of some of these ramifications. And both were signed off on it, in terms of that they liked it. Needless to say, that does not bind this Committee, the Policy Committee, or the full Board in any way, but they did, for the most part, like what they saw, with a couple suggestions. And then I did meet with Mr. Smoller, just to give him some initial feedback. So some of what I heard tonight was, did not surprise me, some of it was new information. I thought we had accounted, we did make some changes based on Mr. Smoller's feedback. It was, I very much appreciated that he took the time to meet with me to go over this. But there, as I said, you know, there might be room for changes we want to make. On the other hand, we may say, no, this says what we intended it to say, and now it's up to the administration to go with the intent of it. And, so that said, are there any initial questions?
Comments and questions from the Board on our first read? On both of these policies?
Yes.
Correct. Ms. Pitco?
I don't have a question so much, I just want to thank Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, the amount of time we spent going through the pages of documents, line by line, both as teachers, trying to look at everyone's best interest when making this. And I fully accept that we need to look at some of the language, but we really did try to do our best in going through this and making sure that everybody was going to be okay when this was done.
For the most part, these are, most of our policies are administered by administrators. They're enforced by teachers, but ultimately, when somebody is quoting a policy, frequently it's the headmaster or the principal that has to communicate to a student or a parent And so I believe that we gave an opportunity to, for the administrators, the District Leadership Team-
Yes, I apologize, I thought the list was more extensive, yeah.
And I wonder if Dr. Jones has any comments that she'd want to share from the staff perspective, the administrative staff perspective, as opposed to the teaching staff perspective?
Yeah, I mean, I think if we were, and I don't know if the Board is kind of really set on having both in policy, I could see where the political activities of school employees could be an operational procedure, that you could allow administration to work with our staff on, to give them guidance, because I think some of what the staff have said tonight is, it is very, it is challenging, and some of the issues we've had just since I've been here in the last year, I'm not sure that this really gets to that, or that- sure that this really gets to that, or that it would change, I guess, the outcome. The one piece I'm really excited that we're putting in is the policy on school, what happens on school property. Because I did get a lot of phone calls one evening last year when we were having a big school event, and there was a lot of political activity, and I went right to the policy, and we didn't have one. And I expected to find one, and I think there's a real need for that. Some of the, I guess, minor issues that could have upset people, which I think staff alluded to a little bit tonight, which is, you know, we're not going to stop a student who wants to wear a campaign T-shirt or wearing a button or handing their friend, if their parent is running for office, a button at school. We're not going to have, and we can't by law. So I think it's just understanding how we can implement this. But you're not going to completely shut down any sort of political activity in school from the eyes of a student because by law, we can't do that. So I just, I just want the board to understand that piece because I think there's, if you don't live in our school law world, there are people who would love to say, just no politics in schools. But that's just, students have rights as well, so, and so do teachers. But I just want to share those two pieces.
And with that in mind, could, the phrase at the end of political activities in the schools on school board property that says, that is disruptive of the educational environment is not permitted. It's my understanding that kind of comes from case law, that the, that is used as, so could you describe what the intent of that phrase is?
So the idea of, that is the one area where students' speech can be restricted, if they are doing something that is disruptive of the educational environment. So we picked that deliberately. It also, I don't believe in case law or as guided by Ms. Deasy on this, there isn't a definition of disruptive. That's determined by staff, and that's where, you know, things like balanced and fair, intellectual level maturity, we're not going to define those. That's up to the professionals to do that. So yes, this wording is taken from what's commonly considered, that's where the line can be drawn. The administrator makes the determination. Obviously, what could be disruptive at an elementary school level is very different from what could be disruptive and expected at a high school level. And this is meant to be a single policy across all of our schools where, again, we have very capable administrators who are enforcing this. And so that's the background of that language. We decided to do it as a single line as opposed to many, many, many lines stipulating what students can do because we thought this was simplest and cleanest.
And at the moment, as board members know, we have policy, but from time to time, there are administrative regulations that help guide staff on what these words mean. And so my guess is if the superintendent finds that some administrative guidance needs to be given, that she would put together some administrative regulations to help answer those kind of what-if questions. And the board has a right to look at those administrative regulations, and generally, before they become official, the superintendent will share them with the board and say, I'm about to make this official, and give me feedback. So there may be a further refinement if the staff find that is necessary.
Absolutely.
I would only make one comment. I'm comfortable with 1311 point two A, the political activities in the schools on school board property. I think staff do get asked, hey, a candidate showed up at my stepping up or my whatever activity, and what am I supposed to do? Or a candidate came onto school board property during school hours and started videotaping themselves someplace, and what am I supposed to do? And so I think this gives some guidance on those kind of questions, very practical questions. I think 1311 point one does get into the constitutionality of free speech and all that. So I don't know whether you want to move one forward and have your committee listen to tonight's conversation and give one last look at this, or whether you want to put both of them on for final vote on March thirteenth. I'm looking for guidance from you on what you wish to do.
I think before, so long as I don't have to commit to that just yet, I definitely am planning to put it on the agenda for our end-of-February policy meeting, so I'd rather make that decision with the full policy committee. And also just to say, part of our understanding was, there was no guidance being given to staff on these. I know that in my district, we get very explicit direction because, in fact, these are things that teachers cannot do. We're not allowed, it's bad practice, et cetera. And so knowing that there had been nothing, that is the void that we stepped into with this policy. But again, but yes, I do, you know, I definitely think that there's a little bit more discussion. We have, again, the public comment was very valuable.
Okay, so I won't state, as I normally do, this will be on the agenda for action on March thirteenth. I will wait for guidance from the chair. Final comments on these two policies before we move on to this use of physical force. Mrs. Gerber, Ms. Leeper, and Ms. Pitco, right?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Mrs. Max and Cannelly because I had submitted some questions in writing in advance, and she addressed them, so that's why I didn't say anything about either one of these policies.
Ms. Leeper?
Likewise, to the policy committee, I submitted several questions in writing, and thank you to Mrs. Max and Cannelly for getting back to me. And I thought the public comment tonight was really valuable, and it got me thinking of one another question. Is there room in this policy for civics in action? Like, for example, if a civics high school teacher wanted to bring their students along to advocate for their budgets, their school budgets, is that acceptable? Could that be something, like, could we have a civics class in here when it's budget approval time, and the students advocating on their own behalf for their budget? Is that acceptable? Not to answer now, just food for thought. And I'm coming from a school district where we had a lot of civics in action and students involved in protesting with the school. And so this is quite, quite a departure from that. Not saying one's better than the other, but just, just sort of food for thought.
So let me add to that by posing this. As Mrs. Max and Cannelly and Mrs. Gerber know, in my, in the first campaign 2011, I had nine high school student intern volunteers working on my campaign. Because John Hopkins in New Haven has a course where the course requirement is participate in a local campaign. And a friend of mine from church called me up and said, I got to turn something in tomorrow. Can I participate on your campaign? I said, sure. And eight of his friends saw him the next morning and said, do you think you'd take me too? So does this policy contemplate a civics class that might make that as a learning experience?
If you look on the second policy, 1311 point two, in the middle of the page, school group participation in political events. School groups may not participate in parents that create an undue amount of interference with the regular school program. Neither of what you have described would fall into that. Or that cause an excessive amount of students' absences, so long as you're not pulling them out of the classroom to campaign for you, Mr. Dwyer. I think we are all set. And I will say that to the point of, my earlier point that in being in contact with the RTC and DTC chair, the one thing that both chairs were, you know, fervently in favor of is allowing our students to have that degree of civic engagement on partisan school clubs, which this committee had had no interest in impeding in any way, you know, in their activity time. And so that this was very supportive of that. Does that, I'm sorry, does that language there address what you're referencing?
And my comment as well. Ms. Pitco, I think you were next.
I just, I'm reading through P. 1311 point one, and I'm thinking where the language, I'm not saying don't look through the whole thing, but I'm thinking the language that, based on the comment, was under individual responsibility participating in political functions, A, one through four, it seems to be where public comment was addressing. I know we spent a lot of time on this and a lot of discussion, and I'm getting sort of the sense of what is in the curriculum versus what teachers are doing with their time outside of the curriculum. So I think that's where the language just needs to be clarified. I'm not saying it's not anywhere else in here, but reading through that seems to be where the comments are.
Well, one comment, based on the public comment to Mr. Whaley's point, maybe I should put somewhere that you cannot, that it's fine to talk about the views of certain dead candidates, but I'll get some Ralph Waldo Emerson in there. Big fan of his. I certainly do it with my own classes. But as I said, that had been a very, as Mrs. Pitco knows, she was with us when we wrestled with what had been the number three there of listing all those political activities, and we ended up just pulling it. But as I said, we will definitely revisit this part in policy.
Let's try and get through this and the next one so we...
The next one's easy. So I'll just, I'll end with my, what I always say at the end of a first read, which is, please get any additional questions to me in advance of the next meeting. And now that you know that what the policy committee will be doing at its next meeting, if you have language suggestions of your own, we've been language suggesting now for six months, so, you know, anything that, if it's only that you know that you don't like something, then we can work on it. But if you have a suggestion, we would certainly love to hear it. And certainly, any questions in advance of the meeting, I would appreciate.
Last policy.
Last policy, 5144. This is, this is example of everything you're looking at in black is existing policy. You have to go to page E, where you see the blue line language. You see what is being taken out, we're suggesting for removal and for replacement. This is generated from state statute language restricting the scope of who needs this type of training. Kudos to the state for waking up on this one. So that one is pretty straightforward. But again, if you have any questions, I would appreciate them in advance of the next meeting.
This one will go on the agenda, definitely.
Yes.
March thirteenth, okay.
And just one quick, I want to thank Mrs. Jacobson and Mr. Peterson. This is their first policies coming forward. As new board members, I assured them, so a lot of the time, it gets absolutely no fanfare. In fact, I always question the degree to which people actually read them. This was an exciting way to start with policy.
Item D, discussion of facility planning considerations. We were not able to find a date that nine of us could meet in special session to have this first discussion, so we decided to add it on to this agenda just to get the ball rolling. I do have to say that our meetings seem to get away from us, and so I am afraid of putting this type of discussion that sometimes needs enough time to percolate on the back end or even the front end of an agenda that pushes everything else off and causes people to be sitting in the audience yawning. So we will try and get a series of special meeting dates that people can make so that we can address this in a responsible fashion. Having said that, who wants to open up or start a conversation on these three documents? Which is enclosure five, six, and seven. Why don't we tackle them in order? As a clarification point, this board has twice adopted a facilities plan. This board has twice adopted a facilities plan, once in 2010, once in 2015. Every time we do a project, numbers change because we learn things, and then the director of finance for the town will call up Tom Cullen and say, I need you to move a project to the left or to the right on this chart because it's not adding up in keeping the town at less than 10% in principal and interest payments. So the numbers will get shifted by staff to comply with the town's wishes and to keep it updated as to, as we get new information. The priorities in the plan, which set Riverfield, then Holland Hill, then Mill Hill, and what is needed at each school, that has been board action. Generally, what happens is when we update this just prior to the Fall Capital Workshop that happens in this town every year, Tom works with the town staff and updates the numbers wherever necessary, makes shifts wherever necessary to make Mr. Mayor happy, and then it gets discussed at the Capitol Workshop. These are placeholders, the numbers. They're just placeholders because the real numbers aren't known until you actually go out and bid and all that kind of stuff. That's the genesis, the purpose of this is to know in advance what the town is looking at, how we fit into it, and make sure that we stay within that 10% rule. That's the essence of this document. Comments that Ms. Vitale or Dr. Jones wish to make on the waterfall chart?
I don't really have anything right now except just the 25 million that was brought up from Mill Hill, which I appreciate really can't be spoken to at this point until more work is done by the building committee. I think that we, now that we've moving this project forward with the project team funding, hopefully, we'll get more information in the upcoming months. That's just my opinion. If other board members feel differently about that number.
For those who hadn't gotten to the third, one, two, three, four, the fifth page, question number 12 on the document that was at your table today, the question that was asked, how do we get from nine million a couple of years ago to 25 million? It's not hard. But nonetheless, that outlines the kind of, here's what happened year after year after year, and the rationale behind each of those steps. But yes, that is a question that I am sure will be a question that is asked as we move the project forward. And I guess I'll make the other comment. For years, this town has debated, if we're going to do a school, should we do everything that is needed at that school and get it all done? And then they look at the price tag, and they say, well, we can't afford that. And they agree to do half of what is needed, a third of what is needed. We'll postpone this to another day, and then that other day waits forever. And that is a debate that has happened in this town, project after project after project. Should we do the whole thing and bite the bullet or do it in pieces? And my guess is that will be a debate that continues. Dr. Jones, do you have any comments on that?
I think it was really just to make sure, because we do have a lot of new board members, that everybody understands what the waterfall chart is, how it works, and so Mr. Cullen is prepared to answer any questions. Or do you have anything you wanted to add, Mr. Cullen, about the waterfall?
Yeah, I'd love to explain to the board that it, for me, it's a living document. I don't ever put it away. It sits on my desk behind me. As facilities and maintenance, things come up and happen. I'm constantly revising it and working on it. I have the priority one, two, and three list. As the things get too large, we move them onto the waterfall. Since the town workshop financial summit in September, there's about six or seven changes already on this waterfall. So those are things like...
On this waterfall?
Yes. Things like Holland Hill, when the Holland Hill real number comes in, it'll get revised. It was mentioned tonight from a parent that the Sherman number's 3.2 million. That's known. The two roofs warranty extensions are coming off. We had really good news with those. The original manufacturer, Carl Firestone, is going to do a warranty program that's going to work out to about three cents a square foot of repairs we have to do, which is minimal. So that 1.5 million will come off. We put a placeholder in for Mill Hill that mirrored Holland Hill, and then I have a couple of large projects that are coming up that were unexpected, that are related to some very large HVAC equipment, one on our high school and one on a middle school. That'll be coming up. So these things just happen day in, day out. I keep it on my desk. I constantly revise it and work on it and work with contractors. And then when the time is right, we'll do an update on it.
So let me clarify, down in the very lower left-hand corner and hardly readable type, it says 8/25/17. That's the date you prepared the chart for the Fall Capital Workshop?
In September, correct.
Are these numbers the same, is that 8/17 document?
Yes.
Or have they been updated to February 13th, 18?
They're the same.
From August.
From September.
So this is a waterfall as of August of 17. You're seeing it on February 18 as of, we always put that stamp on it, says enclosure number one. But these are numbers, and Tom is changing them from time to time based on what he has information on. And then we'll update this chart with official numbers the next time the town asks for it, or if the... or if there's a reason for the Board of Ed to say, "Can we get all of those numbers updated?" We don't do it too often because literally, these do, numbers do change week to week, month to month, and this board just does not have the time to try and track every number when that changes. We really look for the significant change.
Lastly, we don't know what all the town bodies will approve or reject. So, anything that gets rejected or pushed to another year gets modified.
But it does state the general priority. These, these priorities have more or less been set for a number of years. When are we dealing with this project? When are we dealing with that project? They get shifted year to year, but the basic concept of who comes first and who comes second more or less stays the same unless there's an emergency like Fairfield, Liddell Roof. Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
That's exactly to my one question because obviously, we'd had that surprise several years ago where Mill Hill and Holland Hill got switched with no board input and after, I think, very robust discussion, were reset into the order that we had expected. With that, is there anything on here that, I mean, obviously, we've, we see looking way down the road to Dwight renovation, to Jennings renovation, or any of the other projects? Has there been any changes in priorities since the board last, a Board of Education last discussed this?
No.
Okay.
And to clarify on that point, because that was a sore spot. Tom will get a call from the, we're trying to put a project forward, and the town says, "We're willing to finance it, but the math doesn't add up. I need you to change something so I can tell the Board of Finance the math works." And so, in that instance, the easiest way to comply was to switch those two projects simply because then the math worked. I don't think it was the staff's intent to change the priority, but that's an example of moving things around so that the math will work to our favor when we're trying to get a board approval, a Board of Finance RTM approval. And then with debate, the priority was put back the way it was originally intended and other things were changed when there was more time to do it and it footed again. Mrs. Leeper.
On, the page isn't really numbered, but under Sherman for 1819, it has the 3 million, but then on the final page, it has Sherman has 1 million. And I'm, I'm new at the waterfall, so I'm not sure if I, if there's just something I don't, I don't know.
Anything?
Probably a different project.
The project total says 1 million?
The roof project for Sherman, 1,381.
And on the final, is it not the final page? It says additions and renovations for Sherman, waterfall schedule, multi-year projects.
The color change.
The yellow.
There's, there's two Sherman.
It says, does it not say 1 here?
Yeah, the way you're reading it, the way the waterfall works is the top number is the request and the total amount. If the project has to be phased in over multiple years, it gets a color, and then you drop down and you see the phasing for the funding request. Because the town, you know, when we ask for like Holland Hill right now, when we ask for Holland Hill, 18,720,000, if that's the number, we're not going to spend the 18,720,000 in one year. It's going to take, the Building Committee will probably spend 2 or 3 million the first year, 9 million the second year when the big addition's done, and then, you know, 5 or 6 million the third year. So, the town wants us to break down what we think the draw will be on the 18,720,000. So, I think that's what you're looking at. You're looking at the bottom part?
I'm looking at the project totals. We're in yellow, Tyler Yellis is 1 million.
I think what it's doing is, is taking the, the $1 million from the Sherman project from 2012, 2013, and then it has a separate line further down for the Phase 3 that goes through to the...
Thank you.
The Sherman that's up above, the 1,025, 26, that's, that's cash that's going to go out the door that particular year?
That's from the project before.
So, that's, that is cash going out to the door from Phase 2? The number down below is cash going out the door on Sherman?
Three.
On Phase 3?
Correct.
Thank you.
It's a drawdown. If you look at the waterfall from years ago, it'll show you 10, 11, 11, 12, 12, 13 is the remainder of that payment.
Other questions that board members have on the waterfall chart? This is an expression of priorities. It's a floating expression, but it is an expression of priorities relative to this board saying, "What's the most needy project that we want to do now and how do we budget it in?" And I'm going to say, now that we've voted the Mill Hill and at the risk of opening up a debate, one of the longstanding commitments we have made to this town as a board is that we will work with the town to help the town and ensure the town stays within that 10%. So, if one of our projects well exceeds the budget, and that's an important project, project to us, then it's incumbent upon the Board of Ed to shuffle other projects around again so that we stay within the 10%. And we've agreed that, that we'll do that. And it's a dance that is hard for Tom to kind of manipulate the numbers and say, "Okay, how do I get this to foot?" But that is a commitment we've made, and with Mill Hill in particular, we are carrying about 20 million between planning grant and budget on the waterfall chart. If it goes over a couple of hundred thousand, 500,000, that's an easy thing to adjust for. If it hits the $25 million number, that's going to be a harder thing to adjust for, but this board has made a commitment that we will work with the town to push Mill Hill forward because it's important to us, and we'll adjust something else. And that's what causes projects to suddenly get pushed out. Final comments on this document? Okay, let's move on. Yes?
Given the time, can I just suggest that maybe we move to the considerations that really kind of came out of Malone and McBroom since they are here rather than the guiding principles, which...
Okay.
Just in the order of the agenda.
And which...
Well, because right now, discussion of guiding principles is next.
Okay. Yeah, agreed. You're talking about...
And then I'm just, and then...
You're talking about this document.
Yeah, the facilities considerations.
Yeah, that was Dr. Jones's memo that was informed by the Malone and McBroom report, but it's Dr. Jones's memo.
Yes, this memo of that.
So, what comments do you wish to make on this?
I would really just, through the chair, Dr. Jones, just to really, you know, share her thoughts on this document, being that she presented this to us. Really, it was just at our chair on November 27, and she never really got a chance to present it, so...
Yeah, this, this was the work that came out of the Ad Hoc Committee in looking at, when we were having that big structural change discussion, ideas that were, you know, put forward from community members. And so, taking all the different ideas that were put forward, trying to create some sort of sense out of it, because it was a lot that came from the community and some staff included, and putting it on one chart. And from that one chart, then trying to drill down to the Malone and McBroom piece, which is the facilities considerations. And that's the only piece that I really was, I think when we were talking about tonight, was looking at the facilities considerations. And I do think anytime you, you know, you present publicly at the Ad Hoc Committee about going back to One High School, it makes people nervous. That was a legitimate, you know, suggestion from some in our community, and so I think you have to acknowledge that and respect that. But I also think that on some of these, it might be nice to bring closure if the board, in fact, you know, has a consensus on what your thoughts are. And I really don't know because we've never discussed them. And I really thought these items, again, were going to be discussed by that Ad Hoc Committee, which was a mixture of various town bodies. But, you know, closing an elementary school, that discussion started last spring and especially with what's happening around the state of Connecticut. I, I have a personal opinion after especially the work that Malone and McBroom did, looking at the 10-year projections, looking at the size of the facilities we have. I think it's an incredibly difficult thing to do, and I think when you go back historically in Fairfield and we look at our history, I don't think it would be a wise decision to close an elementary, but the board may not be of that same mindset. But if that's not something that the board is going to consider, I wish we would mark it off the list so that people who are at our other elementaries, especially the smaller schools, the, the parents won't feel so nervous about that because it's scary and it's scary for staff. And if it's a real consideration and it needs more thought, then we leave it on the list. But let's talk about it and at least help staff in the community understand that the board is looking at it or not looking at it. The second is, sorry.
Can I just make a motion to suspend the rules and extend to 11:30?
Oh.
We don't have to go all the way to 11:30. I just thought I'd put that out there.
Is there a second for that? Mrs. Jacobson, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. Okay. So, it needs six votes for approval. Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Leeper, Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Jacobson, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly opposed, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Peterson. It passes. We're up to 11:30. And our rules, if you will, say that we can extend it once and that's it. So, you are continuing with...
Yeah, so, so closing the elementary, I just think it's either, either it's a discussion or it's not. If we've had enough information from Malone and McBroom for people to know how they feel again, and if we need to explore more as a school superintendent, I would need to know that because we would need to go out and ask more questions and do more study. Relocating Walter Fitzgerald, that was something, again, that came up from the community. That's probably one of those items Mr. Cullen and I both would love to do. It's very difficult and challenging to find space, but it is, if you haven't toured that building in a long time, I would encourage you to go tour it because we don't, it's, it's a building that by far is the most challenging property that we have students in right now, and we don't have the flexibility to go in. It's not our property, so we can't go and do what we need to do to it. So, that is one I think needs more, further discussion. But grade reconfiguration, this is again, it was a different concept that would take obviously a lot of work with, if you were using the scenario that Malone and McBroom did with Jennings and McKinley, it does solve racial imbalance literally almost immediately. Is there, are there concepts that actually with a K1, 2, 3, 4, 5, could actually be very beneficial for children? I think there could be, but it's just a brand-new concept that we haven't explored. So, but it doesn't necessarily go along well with the guiding principles because you're changing the configuration of, of two of your schools. Does also, just in the vein of structural change, it does have cost savings. Because Jennings is such a small school, it's difficult to get the number of sections to find efficiency. So, a K1, 2, 3, 4, 5, right out of the gate, has about a half million dollars a year savings. So, I think it's one of those concepts we could explore, but again, that's the will of the board. Relocating central office to an existing school as part of grade reconfiguration, that's something we haven't really looked at extensively because right now, we don't see the space. You know, when you look at that 10-year projection, could there be space somewhere 10 years out? But it's also very expensive just to relocate central office. Sounds really easy, but you're relocating technology and all the other things that go with it. So, and I think the really telling part, and you probably know off the top of your head, our rent here is so inexpensive. I was shocked when I first saw the rent.
Yeah, it's not actually a lease agreement. It's more of a condominium purchase is what the contract was. So, the rate's very low per square foot, and it was recently negotiated to add eight more years to the two-year extension we already had, so we have 10 years at a very good rate.
10 years from...
I think it's 2016.
Yeah, so, we're locked into 2026. It could take us that long to figure out what to do, but we're locked into 2026.
And then the last thing was to consolidate One High School. And again, to be respectful of people in the community, I mean, I've studied the history of Fairfield. I've read the, the book they have at the museum. I've, you know, looked at the charts that show when we've opened and closed schools. You know, I, I have a strong opinion on this one simply from educational quality. I, I believe, and just taking all of the financial aspect out of it, which I think Malone and McBroom also presented facilities-wise, that how do you do it without spending tremendous amount of money? I believe there's a big difference in educational quality in high schools that are 3,000-ish students and high schools that are 1,200 and 1,500. And that's, again, from an educational standpoint. I've been in systems where high schools were big, been in systems where they were smaller. I'm married to a high school teacher who right now is in a high school over 3,000, has been in high schools with 900. We've had this discussion a lot because when you have one huge drama production in the spring, I cannot even imagine having one production with our two high schools and the talent that we have and imagining that one entire group of students would not be in that production. That's really what, what happens in a bigger high school. Doesn't mean people don't find other places to connect, but that's a, that is, again, a superintendent educational quality discussion. If you're looking at it on a pure facilities, what I've heard from Malone and McBroom is that it would be incredibly difficult to do without major facility adjustments. And right now, we're talking about a waterfall trying to manage Sherman and Mill Hill. Managing going back to One High School would be just, I don't think it would be efficient or structural change that would send us in the right direction. But again, it's one of those discussions that if the board is a consensus, that that's not something we're going to consider. It would be really helpful, I think, for people that do get nervous about that discussion to hear that.
And I'll call you in a second. One of the steps that was intended on having been made is to have the Ad Hoc Committee look at this document and say, "Are these the five issues we're going to focus on?" And the rest of the stuff belongs with the full board, with the staff, with the Finance Committee, but we were going to give that committee an opportunity to look at this list and see if anybody says something on that list really ought to be brought forward to the front page. And so, I would suggest that, that this board kind of take that step, and if you study this back part and say, "There's an issue back here that really should be brought forward for full debate because it really falls into these 1 through 5," bring it forward so that we can add it to the list. Ms. Pitco.
Yeah, I was just wondering if any further consideration had be brought to bringing the concept of the magnet school since we had put it into our racial imbalance plan. I was very surprised it wasn't on the list. I know that we sent out a Survey Monkey. And the other one that I know we've talked extensively about is possibly moving the ECC because it's outgrowing its space. And here, we're talking about moving Walter Fitzgerald and central office, but there's another place that is, is growing beyond its walls.
Mm-hmm. I think both easily fit onto this list in terms of the, how they, it relates to the scope of the question. So, you don't have to do it tonight, but if you have a suggestion tonight, make it. But if not, my guess is the next time the board meets, this would be the prime focus of conversation to kind of go through the, "Where are we as a board on these seven issues now?" Mr. Peterson?
Well, if, if that's going to be the case, I don't want to make, I have a lot of kind of late-night cranky comments about this, which I can probably share in a more private setting. Some of these things, obviously...
Make them at 11:31.
I'll make them very quickly, but some of these things obviously have already been done in the, in the, in the not-too-distant past. You know, the central office was once located on Osward Hill School. I believe the alternative high school is also located there in the, in the, in the 80s. I may be wrong about that. A lot of these things that we can, we can absolutely discuss. I'm, I'm open to having whatever discussion there is. One thing that's frankly been rattling around my brain through a lot of this process, talking about closing facilities, is I think we would be having a significantly different conversation at this point in time if we still had Grassmere and Oldfield available to us, which were, which were closed and are now out of our hands and happen to be in places that we could really use space. So, just as a, as a planning consideration far further down the line.
Other general comments on this particular document? I do invite the board to look at the details in the back and bring something forward if, if you think it belongs on this top list. Mrs. Vitale, followed by Ms. Pitco. Mrs. Vitale, followed by Ms. Pitco.
Would I, I would like to just take things off this list tonight, quite honestly. Some of them, I think that, or just get a sense of the body, you know, consolidate into one high school. From what we've heard from the superintendent and from Malona McBroom and many of us having, it doesn't seem like that long ago that we went to two high schools, just in the essence of bringing some closure and to this talking point, which has been a stressor to some in the community and for time for us for future discussions. So I defer to you, manage that.
So to manage that, I don't think, if we're going to have another meeting in the not-too-distant future, I don't see anything wrong with putting that on as an action item that can be noticed to the public as it properly would be. Tonight, we would have to actually pass a motion to add an item to our agenda to take action. Right now, this agenda only says discussion. So we do have to, we would have to, with six votes, say, nope, we're ready to act, be done with it, and I'd have to entertain a motion to add a business item to the agenda, get six votes for it, and then debate and act on the motion. Mrs. Gerber.
I agree with Mrs. Vitale that I think there are definitely some items on this list that we can cull. Although I do think that at 11:05 at night, when it hasn't been noticed, it's probably not the best time to do it. But I would, I would ask that if it is all possible for there to be some sort of an item put on the next agenda where we can actually start to X some of these items off if that is the will of the board. Because I think these things have been in limbo long enough, and the sooner that we fine-tune the list a little bit more so we can really focus on the items that some of us agree on and some don't, but if there's some that we universally think should not be on the list, I'd like to take them off.
And so the phrase that you'll see on the, if that's acceptable, the phrase that you'll see on the next agenda, which sometimes you'll see, is discussion and possible action on the following subjects. And that gives us license, if you will, to say, we noticed the public, we're going to be taking action on this. Mr. Peterson, Mrs. Jacobson, Mrs. Vitale.
Well, I think it's, I'm very much in favor of removing items from this by sense of the board. At the same time, I don't want to tie the hands of the new finance committee that we're creating. If, I don't want to close any doors of things that they want to reopen. So as long as we're clear that we're not binding them to not look at things, but we're providing a sense that this board is in favor of or opposed to some items, I would move forward in that direction.
My only comment would be if the board voted eight to one to not consider one high school, I think the finance committee probably would take that to heart.
That's fair enough. And I, again, I just don't want to tie their hands of a thing we created an hour ago.
Correct. Mrs. Jacobson, then Mrs. Vitale.
Just quickly to follow up on that, I would say that it would probably be helpful for the new committee to possibly know the things that we definitely don't want to hear about again going into that. So my exact real question is, this original, which didn't print out very well at home, but this original, is that where this list came from? The items that are on this, that were like, which had a lot more items on it?
It went through different iterat, we had, what did we end up having?
Yes.
Two or three meetings? And that one, I think, was like the first meeting after we generated and then tried to take all of that and consolidate it into this. And to be honest, I can't, I don't remember if this one actually, if it disbanded, if it was supposed to be at the meeting where, and then...
This is a document that was mailed to the ad hoc committee and at the request of the Board of Finance, was mailed to the Board of Finance, who asked me at one heated meeting, so where are we on the ad hoc committee? What ideas have they come up with? As far as I'm concerned, they haven't come up with any ideas, says a certain member of the Board of Finance. So this was to alert to the Board of Finance, here's, here's the results of the first two meetings. That was the purpose of it. And to act as a focusing document for the third meeting of the ad hoc committee that never took place.
Okay, so...
It's had fairly limited distribution.
So if there are things that are on here that didn't make it over here, does that mean that they're not open for consideration going forward?
I'll say it specifically. If there are items on the back pages that did not make it to this memo, unless I hear from somebody that says, put ECC on that front page, put the magnet program on that front page, then we'll create an agenda item for the special meeting that has these seven items plus any other item that somebody comes forward and says, this, this item that's on the back pages, you know, the grids that you're looking at? These grids and this document? There are items on these two pages that any one member of the board says, I'd like to at least have it, have consideration. I'll put that item on just because one board member says I'd like to talk about it.
Okay, so the goal is to get whatever anyone wants from any documents floating around onto the front page of the memo?
That you think fits into this? Yes, the answer is yes.
Okay.
That you think fits into the same kind of, you know, if you say, let's close music fourth grade at two schools, that's too small of an issue, right? I know you wouldn't, but, so I think it has to fit within kind of the big idea topics, personally.
And if I could add, some of the items that were on the chart that had everything are on this big chart as well in the back.
Yes, they are. I understand, but there are some that are not. So I was just wondering what the process was and thinking was, so if, okay.
Can you give an example?
Extending busing guidelines out a little bit further, cutting back on PE, there's a whole, there was a few of them on here.
That's on here, it's on here.
Where is that?
It's on there. Yeah, it's in there somewhere.
It's underconsiderate, the back.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's in there, so we need to get it to the front page? If you, if that's something that you want to talk about it?
If one member wants to come, bring that forward, the answer is yes.
Okay, thanks.
Send me an email that says, put this on, and we'll put it on, and the board will say, thanks but no thanks, or that's a good idea, and let's continue to talk about it. Is there clarity on that particular point, Mrs. Vitale?
Somewhat. This document, I guess I was, in my point, I was not suggesting that we take action and vote on anything about the high school. It was really just to get a sense of the body, to see if we wanted to take action in the future. And also just to get some guidance about taking action, being that this is the first time that we're, this board is seeing in it. We never really voted to even approve considering these things, so I wasn't really sure if we have to vote to not consider something, being that we never really accepted it in the first place? Just that, you know what I'm trying to say? Like...
My, my personal opinion, it is out there in the community. I think the board should make a definitive statement about it.
Okay. I mean, I agree. I just wasn't sure procedurally-wise whether or not, you know, if we have to put a document together and formally take action on that document in the, in future meetings.
There'll be an agenda that has these seven items here.
Okay.
And one by one, we'll talk about them. And because it'll say possible action, somebody will make a motion and say, look, based on the discussion we've had, I don't think exploring this any further makes sense, so let's move it off the list.
And is it going to be just facilities on the front now? Because some of the things that Ms. Jacobson is referencing is more operational and finance, and I just don't want, you know, when we were talking about creating the finance committee, my impression was that facilities was going to be a separate discussion, and the finance committee wasn't necessarily going to be handling the facilities issues and conversations with Mr. Asa and Ms. Leeper about their intent of the committee. So I still think that the two conversations need to be kept separate just for the breadth that each of them brings to the table. So I guess for, for procedure, for moving forward for the next meeting, would be to focus on the facilities as one document, and then anything that is more of a financial, operational, maybe gets to be put in another document, just, you know, once we take action on it, where it should go from there.
Ms. Pitco had her hand up a while ago. Do you still have a question? Okay.
I have two questions, just to respond to that and to what Ms. Jacobson said earlier. If there are considerations, some considerations on here are not facilities and also not necessarily finance either, but if there are things on here that the board does not want to look further into, I think it might be helpful for the newly-formed subcommittee to know that, so that we're not investing a lot of time in doing analysis about whatever it might be.
So can I, so can I say it this way?
Yeah.
From my perspective, that means if Mrs. Jacobson says, I want to talk about the bus schedule, it goes on this agenda item, and if the board says, not interested, we're not going to talk about this, that gives guidance to the finance committee, not worth exploring. It might be a process question.
So, all right, so the goal is to basically take this document and just really, we're going to take action on this at the next meeting, what we want to proceed...
On the front page.
On the front page, or anything that wants to come from the back page that isn't on the front page.
Some individual member is going to have to ask me to do, put it on. I'll put it on.
Okay. Regardless of its facilities or operational or finance.
Unless the board says, no, let's limit this to, the only thing that goes on this front page is related to facilities. If that's what the board wants to do, say so, and then board members won't suggest something that's not facilities. Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Jacobson.
So maybe off a suggestion, we're talking about relocating Walter Fitzgerald's campus. The facilities committee would have to determine what we would need to do that. The finance committee would have to determine how much it would cost, what our current lease is for the space. What facilities committee?
We don't have a facilities committee. We have a full board, we have a full board considering some of these issues. Mrs. Jacobson.
And just one more clarification. If there's an idea that's nowhere here that we want on the front page, can we add that too? Right, so, because, I mean, basically, I just feel like we just want to talk about these things, right? I mean, we just want to talk about them and, and hash them out, and maybe, with the whole point was to be a little less formal and, right, I mean...
So I would say yes.
Okay.
As long as board members, whatever you suggest is going to go on this list. But, but, but I would ask board members to show some restraint and only end up with stuff on this list that are big ideas. They're not small ideas, they're big ideas. That's all I would suggest. Ms. Leeper.
Through the chair to Dr. Jones. I saw the Survey Monkey that went out, and one of the options that was listed was an IB school. And I happen to know a decent amount about IB schools, and I think that IB school is very intriguing and interesting. And I think that my friend was like, what is this? And I was telling her all about it, and she's like, oh, that's, people don't necessarily know, all to say, people don't necessarily know what international baccalaureate is. And I was wondering if there would be an opportunity for you to give like a three-minute summary of what that is for the public, just to educate them so that they can make a more informed choice and have a little background knowledge, if that ends up being a topic, which I, I plan to email you, Mr. Dwyer, to, to discuss.
So that magnet program such as IB program could very well...
Yes.
Right. And when we have some members of the public actually in the room, would be a good time.
The right time to talk about it?
To talk about it.
Like in 2007?
Any other clarity needed on, on this? I do invite any board member to suggest something to me. I'll put it on the list, and the board will decide whether it's worth exploring or not and how much time we put into it.
Can I ask you one thing?
Please do.
Just, just to kind of be clear too, just keep in mind what's on this list was all driven by structural change and cost savings. So when you're just talking about a magnet concept, totally different in that when we were looking at the racial imbalance issue. Now, if you tie that magnet concept to the K-1, 2, 3, 4, 5 Jennings McKinley, and you were doing an intra-district magnet, that could be international baccalaureate, then it becomes cost savings as well as, you know, a racial imbalance piece. But I just remind you to keep them separate because this was very much driven by how we could save money.
So can I ask the board to say, let's draw a line there on the discussion so I can get the next couple of things done before the witching hour? Is that fair? We should have at least asked you one more question to warrant you sitting here, Pat. But we do appreciate that you did. I think you have a couple of pieces of homework to get official answers to us, which we look forward to. And certainly if you heard any discussion here tonight that you think the board would benefit from some clarification on, get to the superintendent about that. Thank you very much for coming out. Approval of minutes or recommended motion? The Board of Education approved the minutes of the special meeting of January 16, 2018. Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Ms. Pitco. See any discussion or comments? If none, all in favor, say aye. Raise your hand, it is unanimous, eight to zero. Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Yeah, obviously, given the hour, I'll just mention the item that's on here for budgeted items on reserve, and it was just to update the board. We're working on all of the numbers right now, and we really need to be able to release our maintenance items by March 1st so that Mr. Cullen has time to actually, if they need to go out to bid, take those to bid and start working on those. We are at a point where I've gone through the list with Mr. Cullen. Most of his maintenance projects he can still do as long as he can use state contract, and we don't know until he puts that forward with the town on some of those items. But we would like to release the maintenance items now, and we feel like Ms. Menzel feels as though that's very doable as well for us to get those maintenance projects done. The reason I put it on here, not only to let you know, but at the very end of the year, it would show up as a budget transfer, and usually that would have been an agenda item. If we wait to put it on March's agenda, then we're just that much farther behind from Mr. Cullen. And the only reason it would be a budget transfer is because we've created this new category of reserve. So I just wanted to be very clear with the board. It's been sitting there, allocated the same item, you approved in the budget, we just want to be able to go ahead and use it for those maintenance items. So I wanted to be transparent about that, but it would show up at the end of the year as a transfer. And we even could bring that forward in March as a transfer if that would make the board feel better. But we'd like for him to be able to move forward with his maintenance projects.
I like past practice, so I prefer to keep everything in June saying, here are all the transfers that we did. Comments on the superintendent's report? What's the value of those items?
The amount frozen was right around 916, and we will probably, at least when we went through it, there are about 200,000 of that that we may not be able to do.
So in the magnitude of 700,000 is a comfort level to balance the budget and still get those accomplished. Fair statement?
I'm just looking at what's on reserve.
Okay. So what's being released is... So the amount that is expected to be released, just a ballpark so the board members know what's the value of, of projects that might get done.
And I have the list here, Mr. Cullen, if you need the list.
I don't have it in front of me, but I can do it from memory, I think. The projects that were in reserve, I think, come to about 436,000. But I think we're also looking at releasing money in painting and paving. Those accounts we cut back and put in reserve to try and help, so we haven't done any of that work, so those were included with it. So that could bring it up to the 700,000 number.
Any questions that the board has on, on moving these forward?
Just one quick question. I assume that there was some staff discussion on the other things there for that were not released, and so the decision may, I was just wondering how the decision was made that this was what would get prioritized.
Well, we really, when we're looking at what's frozen, on the curriculum side so much of it, we can't go back and do, because it was summer work and items like that, the ones that we feel like we need to move forward with, and also listening to the board, everybody feels like the maintenance is so important because if we get behind, it's, it just makes next year that much more difficult. So we were starting with maintenance, and then there is another technology hold which would come behind that. But again, we're going to wait a little bit longer with that piece just to make sure something doesn't go awry still this spring with the state budget. So those, that's really the priority. Curriculum right now, we're okay, and we're coping. And the reality is, we're going to have to use some of that for that special education overage this year.
Anything else, Ms. Pitco?
Can you just, in an email, provide a breakdown for us so that we know?
That's what I would like to bring to you like next month, just, just for you to have a list, actually. But we're moving very quickly on this, and so we didn't have it for tonight. That's why, I just wanted to put it in a superintendent's report, and then we can go through and actually...
then we can go through and actually make a list. These are the projects we're unfreezing and going to move forward with, so the board will know exactly what they are. You're welcome.
No further comment? Okay. Committee liaison reports. Anything that needs to be said in a minute? Mrs. Vitale?
PTA Council met last night. They have a couple of exciting programs coming forward in the next couple of months. Faye is bringing artist, writer, entertainer Leslie Carrera-Rudolph, the voice of Abba Kadabi. She's going to be visiting all 11 elementary schools in February, March, and bringing them a program called The Oz and You Let's Talk Character. PTA Council's also renewing their interest in Tools for Schools. They're going to be providing a training to parents. Tools for Schools is a team, school team, that really just looks at air quality within the buildings. They also are still accepting nominations for teacher-administrator awards, and information can be found on the Connecticut PTA website.
Okay. Other liaison reports?
The RTM, two Mondays ago, voted to accept the teacher contract.
Any other liaison reports? Mr. Peterson?
Just for the sake of completeness, the Board of Finance approved the four items before it, the level parking lot, the security windows, the network switch. Which one am I missing?
Another technology one.
And another technology one.
Yes. Anything else on liaison reports? Open board comment? I'd only remind board members of February 28th. That's the Town Hall meeting. Mike Tetro will be the moderator. So, I encourage you all to come. I, we will have the same agenda item, you know, programs, facilities, finances. And because there's not a whole lot of controversy, I don't know that we'll get too many people here to talk about Mill Hill and Sherman, but we might. So, Ms. Pitco.
So, I am volunteering for the first time to be a judge in Odyssey of the Mind.
Uh-huh. And the other, the other comment I would make is, next Wednesday, I have a preliminary statement from the First Selectman that provided Mr. Cullen gets all of the documentation on Sherman and Mill Hill to the First Selectman's office by the end of the day tomorrow, noon on Thursday, that, that then there'll be enough time to put it on this coming Wednesday's agenda. He's a little concerned about both projects coming forward at the same time. We've generally tried to avoid that. But we moved them forward at the same time, so, so be it. So, no, no commitment as to whether it's going to be acted on favorably or not, but the important point is to get it on the agenda. So, I will confirm that once we know that the documents are to him, and then we'll let you know that they are indeed going to be on the next Board of Selectman agenda. Mrs. Gerber?
I was going to ask about that.
Oh, okay. Any other open board comment? Any public comment? That this, a motion for adjournment, that this regular meeting of the Board of Education adjourn, Mrs. Gerber, followed by Ms. Pitco, all in favor, raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you very much.